Good evening, and welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, February 9th, and we have a series of committee meetings tonight, four of them. We'll begin with planning and development. Councilmember Fau.
Thank you. First on our agenda is a discussion about designation for a city historic district. And I've invited Paul Loeb, our city planner, to come and describe the project. This has to do with the West Union area. And I'd like to congratulate the city and Paul on the Essence of Athens Award that they got today, and they were notified of. Maybe you can say, talk about that.
Who the award came from?
Sure. Good evening, council. Happy New Year. I don't think I've seen you guys in 2015. Paul Loeb, 15-year-old coach rogue Athens, planner for the city of Athens. Like Chris just said, we received notice on Friday that the Essence of Athens Plan, which I believe is on the agenda for this evening. The Essence of Athens Plan was awarded by the American Planning Association as the best small-town special plan in the United States for 2015.
Quite a coup.
It was a big deal, yeah. Thank you. I don't want to take the credit for that. There was a lot of, a lot of people put in a lot of time on that project. Elected officials, we had a lot of city community members put in some fantastic ideas. And we had some nice pro bono assistance from our planning consultants, Designing Local and MKSK. So, like I said, a lot of people put in time on it. It truly was a community plan that had the voice of the community in it, represented very well, I think. So, I thought we had a really good chance for it. I knew it was a really great plan. I wasn't sure what our competition was, but it is, it's thrilling to have that, to have that award, so, thanks again. As far as tonight's agenda, so that we're not all here forever, hopefully at least I won't be, we just had a Historic Preservation Commission monthly meeting. Actually, we just got out of there five minutes ago. Mary Ann Reeves, the chair of the Preservation Commission, is present. And Sari Landers, one of our preservation commissioners, is also present. We've been talking about several things. The big subject for the last several months has been the Union Street Fire, and how to, how to address that situation, what is the role of historic preservation with the possible rebuilding, and how can they be of assistance? What we've discovered is that one of the best potential ways to assist those property owners and to assist the community get Union Street rebuilt in an appropriate fashion is the opportunity for property owners to apply for historic preservation tax credits. The state of Ohio has a grant tax credit program that offers 25% of work, dollar-for-dollar match, on historic preservation efforts. What they need to do in order to tap into those credits, though, is that a building either needs to be in a federally-registered, national, on the National Registry of Historic Places, or they need to be, have a local designation. Our National Registered District, which I've included in your packet, that was created back in 1982. And most of the buildings impacted on the Union Street Fire, for whatever reason, were not listed in that district. We're not exactly sure why. When we showed, we had some meetings up at the state recently. Mary Ann and I, and John Paskey, our co-director, as well as some of the property owners, met with the state Historic Preservation Office and the Development Services Office last Monday. What they said is that if we were to apply for the same district for the National Registry in 2015, the National Registry would not accept just a random line between two, two buildings and saying, "A district ends here and starts here." The requirement now would be that you have to go to either a public alley or to a public intersection, and both sides of the street have to be included. But back in 1982, when this district was adopted, at least what we believe is that there was a little bit of arbitrariness to the decision, and at the federal level, there was, it was a little bit loose as to where boundaries were allowed to end. So, they've tightened that up a lot. The Historic Preservation Program, as far as being registered, it was pretty much in its infancy back then, and it's a lot more mature now, of course. We're talking 30, 34 years later, 33 years later. So, they've changed the rules a little bit. But at the state level, you are allowed to be designated at the local level to accept a 25% state tax credit. You can apply for a grant for that. The federal tax credit, which property owners may also utilize, actually an additional 20%, but you have to be in a National Registered District to be eligible for that additional 20%. So, some of these buildings may be eligible for both, which is a 45% tax credit, up to $5 million, which is a huge, huge benefit to a property owner to get appropriate rebuilding of significantly fired damaged structures. But for our purposes, what we're talking about this evening is council considering having a locally-designated district that incorporates four buildings that are not in the federal district. As you can, you can see on the map I provided, the orange section is the boundary of the U.S. Department of the Interior Federal Registry. That includes 10 and 12 West Union Street. Most of us would recognize them as 10 is Uptown Dog T-shirts, and 12 is Jack New Floral. That's the Queen Anne Building. And then the other buildings, 14, 16, 18, and 22 West Union are not in the federal registry. Now, there might be a few reasons why, like I said, one requirement of federal registry is that a building has to be at a minimum 50 years old. 22 West Union was actually built, I think, in like 1936 or '37, according to the tax card. So, when this was all written back in 1982, it was only about 48 years old. So, it wouldn't have even been eligible back then. But now, we're talking 30 years later, so it's actually an 80-year-old structure. It is eligible. That goes to another point, is that historic districts need to update it from time to time, and they shouldn't be static and say, "Well, we did our work back in 1982," because buildings get older. Things that might have been an inclusion back in 1982 were actually, might be considered historic. In 2015, perhaps a, a modern structure that was built in the mid-'50s wouldn't have been considered historic or even appropriate 33 years ago, but now we look back and say, "Maybe modern architecture should be considered." So, down the road, we might want to consider updating, doing additional inventory work to update these. I've also included, on the first page of that packet, is the procedure. In order to get local landmarks and local historic districts designated, at the meeting that just occurred of the Historic Preservation Commission, they voted by a 5-0 with one abstention to recommend to city council that these four buildings be designated as a local historic district. We just had our meeting, and so we haven't had an opportunity to draft a letter to city council yet and provide some more information about the buildings. Yes?
How can you recognize a building that's been burnt to the ground as historic? It doesn't exist anymore.
Well, they all still exist, and one of the, one of the major things with those buildings, at the state level, they, they identify things as being historic. You know, they're, you're allowed to do improvements and make changes to buildings over time.
Right.
So, if, if they're historic to the city of Athens, if they meet the definitions within the ordinance, it's pretty, it says if a, let me see if I can find it in here. Well, if you look in 4511, the designation criteria, "If its character, interest, or value shall be, shall be part of the development, heritage, or cultural characteristics of the city, state, or the United States." All of those buildings, to most people, I think, what we would say is that they, they tell a story about the development of Athens, about the changes with Ohio University and the growth of the university. They tell part of the story of the changes with our uptown and the development of commerce within Athens. And I believe that's what the Historic Preservation Commission would identify as being historic. Those buildings all do have a lot of history. The Union was originally a hotel, for example, the Athens, I think it's the Athens Hotel. The Jackie O's Building, I don't recall what that was, but it too was a traditional commercial building. A lot of people think, you know, a historic building, it needs to have, George Washington had to sleep there, or something along those lines, or Frank Lloyd Wright had to build it or design it. That's usually not the case, actually. The Athens buildings are actually, the Uptown District as a whole is a really good example of a cohesive downtown commercial corridor, where you have a lot of buildings that were built at the same time. They all have a similar theme. They're all very modest, which also tells a story about the community. We have other neighborhoods in Athens, like the East State and Elmwood District, which one of the, one of the reasons that's considered historic is because of the eclectic nature of the architecture.
While hearing from, you're using the term "district" far more than you are "building" or "structure."
Right.
So, even though the, the buildings have damaged, and one, I mean, to me, it looks like it's gone. But anyway, what you're really referring to is the district itself as being historic.
Correct.
And therefore, they would qualify for grants and so on to rebuild.
Correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
That makes sense to me.
Right. And they would, we, we had everything reviewed. We showed all of the images to the state, the Ohio Historic Preservation Tax Credit Office. We showed everything to them, because that was one of our questions, too. There's been so much damage, are these buildings so far gone that they are not eligible for tax credits? And one of the arguments that they made was, "Well, because all those buildings are right next to each other, there's, there's not, you can't even see the back to most of them." The, the historic nature at this point, a lot of it has to do with that, the facade and that front elevation. And so, as long as those elevations and those front facades are still intact, you'd be eligible. Now, if a building were torn down, if it were rubble, then no, you would not be eligible for a tax credit, even if you tried to rebuild it to look exactly like it used to. You would no longer be eligible for that, so. Does that answer that question?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Okay. The, the ordinance does require, like a 30-day notice to the property owners that we have, we, city council would have to do a public hearing. Ideally, we would try to arrange that for March if city council was interested. The, the deadline, and we've been really scrambling since this fire came out, completely unexpected to everybody's lives. The, the deadline for the, the tax credit program at the state is March 31st to apply. And so, what we were told at the state last Monday is that for anything to be eligible in Athens, we would have to have an ordinance through city council and adopted prior to March 31st. The ordinance, the Title 40, 42.12 requires public, it requires public notification. It also requires that we send letters to the property owners to let them know that this is being discussed and to, that there's going to be a public hearing. And so, if they have any issues, that they're allowed to come forward. We've spoken with most of the property owners and have been in discussion with them. I was hoping, actually, that some of them would be present this evening, but they're not, but it's my understanding that they all support it.
That was my question, is that.
Right.
I, I knew that you'd been having meetings with property owners, but.
Right.
Property owners aren't board, or, yeah.
Yeah. And having something designated, you know, if you can't build it, or if you, if, if the price, the costs are still too high, if a property owner still says to themselves, "I want to tear down and start over again," they're still entitled to that. You're never, your preservation laws, you can't just say you're not allowed to tear down your piece of real estate. A lot, a lot of people think that's the legal requirement that you now have to retain a building. That's not the case. Unfortunately, historic buildings get torn down every day in the U.S., and we see that in Athens, too.
If that were to happen within the district, how would that affect the district then as a whole? Would that be segmented?
Or is the parking lot in the district?
It would still be part of the district, so I mean, as far as your lines, but you'd have what's called, you're either contributing to the district, you're a building that contributes, or you're a building that doesn't contribute. And if you look at the map of the Uptown District, there's buildings that are within those lines that don't actually contribute to the, the historic nature of a district. Back when this was designated, the, the Chase Building across the street, that was built, I think, in the late '60s, early '70s. It was not a contributing building, but it was still within the district line, and that's just.
And in 25 years, it may be contributing, because it's that.
It's that modern style, right.
Yes.
Right. It will be. I see you rolling your eyes.
I really am.
Well, it's that brutal, brutal architecture.
Right.
I, I think that what we're looking, especially here, is to enable people who are concerned, the owners of the properties, that are concerned about uptown and the uptown cohesiveness of the historic ambiance of uptown, and helping them try to get through this horrific thing that happened. So, it's one of the things that we can do as city council, is to support the designation of this area. I think that there is a time sensitivity with the ordinance and with the public hearing. So, Steve?
This might be getting into weeds, but, you know, it's been mentioned that, you know, an owner has the right to, to demolish their building if they so choose. Does that change the mix, then, in terms of historic preservation for the exposed walls and the buildings of both sides? Say it was building 16 on here.
Right.
That was torn down, does now, does the historic preservation now apply to the exposed sides of the surrounding buildings for what's exposed now? Bricked over windows, there's all kinds of interesting things back there.
Yeah, that's a weed I don't, that's a weed I can't pick right now. I'm just not, I'm not sure. The, that's, I, I'm not sure. Yeah. It could, it could, I suppose, right?
I think one of the ideas is that by supporting the, the property owners in this way, it would be less likely that something would be pulled down and not, you know.
And that's just it. The, yeah, there's, there's going to be significant cost, and some property owners and just in general might look at it and say, you know, "I can rebuild." Athens city codes are silent on aesthetics. I can rebuild, I can go, I can go with materials that might actually, that, that may not complement the Uptown District at all.
Yeah.
That might, that a lot of people might consider an eyesore or something like that. But it's the best way to do it because of, of the cost equation. And the goal of those tax credits, it's acknowledging that there are times where historic preservation might add cost to your bottom line, and so this is a way to offset those costs, to encourage appropriate design for historic districts.
So.
Just one last thing. I really thank you and everyone on that Historic Preservation Group. This is, this is a long way from November 16th, in terms of the work that's gone in to trying to figure this out in a pretty short amount of time, so.
Well, and it's, it's been difficult, and I know it's, you know, it's, it's, it's been a short window. I, I'm not the biggest fan of asking councils to suspend rules and try to move forward really fast with things. I know it's important to make decisions that are, that are wise. We've, this has been such a, there's been so much that we've had to learn really fast and just trying to understand the situation with all of our property owners, understand the laws as they apply. But also, we had just a, a series of holidays that popped up through all of that. And so, it was even that much harder to even have, sit down with people and make phone calls and have meetings, because people were just on vacation. We also had, weather was a part of our problem. We tried to have a meeting for, for property owners in early January to talk about these tax credit programs, and Athens was under a Level 2 or a Level 3, and we were trying to get people from clumps to come down here. And so, we had to cancel, and we couldn't coordinate schedules for like another three weeks when the weather was a little bit better. And then it was like 3 degrees out, and we had preservation officials trying to check out these buildings and give us some armchair quarterbacking, so.
So, well, I, I think probably most council members know that I'm the least, I'm happy about suspending rules, but I'm more than happy to, to look at the timeline here and suspend things when we need to, and accelerate the, the public hearing that we need to have to get it done, so that the land, the building owners can, you know, apply for these by the timeline, beginning of March. And I think that it's a, an important thing to move a, you know, plow ahead with.
And I, I think we do have the time. We've actually got a fifth Monday in March if we needed to, but certainly, or suspending would be.
So, whether we need to do the public hearing, we can introduce the, the ordinance on Monday, whether we can suspend it and pass it and then have a public hearing. So, we can try to get the public hearing as soon as possible. So, that's what, four weeks? It has to be within 30 days or.
It has to have.
Have to have 30 days.
30-day notice, yeah.
So, we can start that tomorrow. Right?
Just to be clear, which comes first, the public hearing?
Well, public hearing has to be before you pass the ordinance.
Right, any ordinance.
But we can also introduce the ordinance on Monday, so that it's, so that people know what's discussing on the public hearing.
Six weeks later, it's done.
I'll defer to council on, on how to, how to proceed.
So, but we will get the ball rowing on that one.
Rowing or rolling?
Rolling.
Make him row.
Make him row. Yeah. If it rains a lot.
So, what it says in 4512 is that we need to, the Historic Preservation Commission needs to get a written, get a written recommendation to council, and then upon receipt of that written recommendation, I would, I would assume that'll go to the clerk. At that point, we'll have to do a 30-day public notice.
Right. So, when you get that in, we can.
We would try to get that in by Wednesday at the latest.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, preferably. I have a cancellation tomorrow morning, so I can work on it.
I'll just add, super quickly, that I know that you and the Historic Preservation Commission has done their homework, accompanied a number of you on the rooftop to overlook the devastation. And again, I applaud the efforts. I know that you've done the homework to get us to this point. So, again, I, I thank you, and I support us moving forward quickly as well. Thank you.
And I, I think the Preservation Commission, when they talked about it this evening, one of the commissioners said, you know, "They, they look at these things as being carrots, ways to incentivize historic preservation and to encourage it." For a lot of people, that bottom line is, is really what they want to hear, "What's this going to cost me to do what you guys want me to do?" And so, if we've got, if we've got carrots that we can offer, that's going to be a big bonus, and that's going to, that's going to help go a long way. I know there's been, in the past, back in like the late '70s, Athens, the city of Athens actually offered like a tax abatement program for historic preservation. They offered that for several years, or something called the Zarni Plan, way back when, that we did see a lot of work done on that. The, the commission has at least mentioned more than once that maybe that would be something to revisit, to offer some sort of a tax abatement for significant historic preservation.
No, no, no.
I see heads shaking. I understand.
Well, and I, I think.
I understand.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I, I agree with Councilwoman Fau about not wanting to push emergency ordinances through, but I've had a chance to sit in on a few meetings with the historical society, and you guys do a great job. I think it is great. I've listened to, and I've also talked to several property owners, and they've been on board with it. And something like this, I would not have a problem pushing this thing through.
At our meeting last week, for example, up in Columbus, Alex and Pete Kalatas actually came with us. They're the owners of 18 and 22, the Union and Jackie O's. They brought their plans. They need to get a roof on the Union. That, that building has no roof right now. They want to get going on that, so that the building doesn't deteriorate any further because of weather. They brought their plans with them and asked the Ohio Historic Preservation Office to review their roof plan, to make sure that they weren't doing anything that would negatively impact their opportunity to get these tax credits.
Got you.
And that they could at least start moving forward with getting that roof built. One of their problems was if they had to wait until they found out if they got the tax credit to actually start work, it wasn't going to be any benefit to them, because they really, that, that roof is their primary concern. So, they were able to work through that. They got some comment on a few things that they should do to, to make sure that they were, they were still eligible for tax credits, and that's what they're trying for.
I think the name used to refer to one of his castles.
What's that?
On the building is castles.
Yeah. That's right. Right.
And Ms. Jeranne Presty can tell you the history of it.
I bet you can.
Yeah. She told us the whole story. It was really interesting.
Yeah.
I have one other question.
Yes.
I, I realize we're on a timeline here. Does, does our district extend down to the end of South Congress?
The.
I don't, my map doesn't go that far.
The, the National Registered District, or the.
The, well.
The district that the Preservation Commission is proposing is just this blue area.
Right. It does not, it doesn't extend down to.
So, I didn't know if there was any benefit to just do the whole thing at this time, or that would be too much.
What's this orange here?
I, I do see other orange on this.
Those are roofs.
Those are just rooftops.
That are orange?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I, I think the idea with limiting, limiting it to the red, and to doing this limited amount, is that we can expedite it. And I think at one point, looking at the whole uptown, Paul and I have talked about looking at designations and doing more in-depth planning of the uptown area, but we don't have, you know.
Time.
The time element is really important. I think the, the building owners have really indicated that they are more than happy and willing to work with the city on this, and so I think that it's a, a good project to go forward. And it could also act as a model, you know, for other parts of, of uptown, so.
That's perfectly put. There, there's a lot of work that has to be done to, to, to discover whether buildings should be considered part of the district, or whether they should be considered landmarks. There's a lot of research. That inventorying process that we did back, to get this stuff done back in 1982, takes a lot of time, a lot of research, and typically, a lot of money. A lot of communities bring in consultants to do some of that work. I, I can, I can assure you that the Preservation Commission, as they continue working on these issues, would, would love to have a conversation with council about considering more, more districts and larger districts, and expanding the National Registry District. However, that is, there's a lot of homework that needs to be done to, to even get to a part where they, they were comfortable speaking with council about that. At this point, I don't think we're prepared to, to make that case yet.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? So, I, I think that this is a go, and so we will start the timeline as soon as you get your letter in to us. So, administration?
We will largely support this endeavor. I also was wondering the same thing as Michelle about, you had mentioned earlier in the presentation that they, they like to look at complete streets and across, you know, both sides of the street and what have you, and maybe that'll play out from the public hearing.
Right. So, but this, I think, is a good step, step forward. Can act as a model, and so we will full speed ahead, working with the, the building owners. And I think that it's a good partnership, so, thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. The second on my, on the Planning and Development Committee agenda is a follow-up from the presentation that the visitors and convention associate, or whatever it's called. Paige, Paige Ellis was, came in and talked about some of the things that they would like the city to help with, to do more economic development when it comes to tourism and convention visitors. And so, it was indicated that there's no bed and breakfasts in Athens. And, which is.
No legal bed and breakfasts.
No bed, okay. No quaint little bed and breakfasts, where you go and stay for the weekend, over graduation, where people come and enjoy themselves and then leave. And so, I think that this is something that has been talked about several times, and what I would like to do is bring it forward, and with a resolution to request the Planning Commission, to start on the process of looking at the zoning and planning situation for adoption. adopting a bed and breakfast situation in Athens, so.
We do allow bed and breakfasts in here, it's under R3 conditional uses. Twenty-three oh four oh three residential zone, C1, hotels, motels, bed and breakfast established only on premises that front a street officially designated as a state or federal highway or in Richland, East State Street, Union Street, or Columbus Road. So it's R3s and above and it's a conditional use which means it has to go through zoning board appeals.
Right, so maybe what we can look at, what I would like is just to have Planning Commission look at other communities and see what, how we can encourage or better plan for, you know, possibility of having small bed and breakfasts.
Okay.
And that is, I think that it's a better place than council to talk about it and for Planning Commission to talk about it and look at the issues and such. So we've been approached by, you know, many people, economic development wise, to look at this issue and I would just like it to be looked at, please.
And realize that the downside of that, if you go to a lower zoning, let's say R1s or R2s, is that you could end up with most of East State Street R zones with large houses turning into bed and breakfasts and more mobilization of the neighborhood, which I think most of you would agree is a peril in many cases.
But I think that the Planning Commission is a good place to look at those issues and investigate what needs to either update or look at the zoning issues to see whether it's appropriate.
Okay.
So I will make, I will develop a resolution that's been, Paul, Logan, I have discussed this, and a resolution just to have Planning Commission look at this issue, so.
If anybody has any.
Thank you, I just would echo support and sentiment for this pursuit as well. In all due respect, Mayor, I think that the ones that you cited is very limiting with our options with R3 and then those particular routes and I think that it makes it challenging for entrepreneurs who want to consider this endeavor. So I think it's important for us to pursue this by sending the request to the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Well, I think also through the Planning Commission, it will be a nice transparent public process and looking at, you know, whether we need to do various things with parking. Personally, if East State Street was, you know, I'd like to see some of the fraternity annexes turn into bed and breakfasts, they probably are better behaved than some of the fraternities. So there's opportunity that maybe because we have other development opportunities for people who own those properties, maybe they will look at not making it into a certain type of large-scale fraternity or sorority annex. So just looking at it as an economic development opportunity. So I will put that forward and we can work on it and look at what happens.
I would just add that I'm also happy to see this move forward because, you know, Athens is a unique university town, unique in part because we have no bed and breakfasts in our city limits. And if you go to any college town around the country, I know that none of the ones I have visited have aspects lacking, you know, we have other options for lodging, we have great options for dining and drinking clearly and great entertainment options, but for those who want to come and stay somewhere other than a chain motel or.
In a student neighborhood.
Yeah, in a residential neighborhood perhaps. So our current zoning is rather restrictive and so, you know, we can look at changing things, we don't have to be wed to the way things have always been, so I think that many of our residents would embrace this opportunity for expanded business and entrepreneurship.
I would like to say one thing, living in one of these neighborhoods and there's only a few of us that actually do on council, that you do have to weigh out the slippery slope on the other side. So there are developmental concerns, which I think is probably partly what the mayor is thinking about as well, but I'm just saying that that's why I think a transparent public process to discuss this, a lot of times people who discuss these things don't live in that neighborhood. So I'm just saying that it is important that all voices be, you know, present and discussing those kinds of things. I worry about our big beautiful homes turning into what many of them have become, which is fraternity annexes or other things. And that's a sad, when you see the beautiful chandeliers and woodwork and everything leaving the building or being destroyed. So I just want to say that there is a balance in that conversation in terms of how you discuss that.
I too echo a lot of the sentiment. I get a lot of calls from a lot of people in the town wanting to know if there's a bed and breakfast. Because they don't want to stay in hotels or whatever here and I'm like, well, no, there's not. And so I think it is something we need to look at because it's a viable option.
Yeah, and this has been something that the Visitors Bureau has put forward several years, so. So I think that it's a start of a process, so we will develop a resolution and to ask Planning Commission to start looking at this, please, thank you, so.
I would add one other thing if I could, is that in terms of our housing, I've looked pretty considerably, you know, we have limited housing for R1 family structures in this town, that's also affordable. So there are many different aspects to this conversation when it comes up to taking something away to become a breakfast, that could be something else. So all I'm saying is in this conversation, there are many sides to the conversation in terms of, you know.
Right, and that's why I think the Planning Commission is, to start this process.
Makes sense.
Okay, so I will bring a one reading resolution on Monday for that.
Mayor.
Sorry, Mayor.
Would you consider bed and breakfast on owner occupied house, a business or rental?
I think that's something that needs to be looked at with the Planning Commission. I think one of the processes we need to look at is look at similar towns to us, look at model legislation and look at model zoning. And I think that bed and breakfasts can have many definitions, we have to decide what's right for Athens and I'm not willing to say, oh, it's like the cutesy, you know, whatever bed and breakfasts that people go to for their honeymoons, whether that's the definition we want, but we need to have a process so we can look through it and make it, you know, distinctly Athens bed and breakfasts. But I think that that's something that's come up time and time again to me as the Planning and Development Chairman, I know Kent's been working on this and different economic development, so I think that it's a process discussion that we need to start and so, and make it distinctly Athens, so. That's, okay, so. Great, I don't have any miscellaneous, do you have any miscellaneous? Okay.
Okay, we'll move on. Thank you, Member Paul. We'll move on to the Transportation Committee, Councilmember Pappy, this chair.
Thank you. We have several miscellaneous in addition to what's on our agenda. Last week I asked that we bring up the Richland pedestrian crosswalk for all of those, those of you that know, we're talking about the major pedestrian crosswalk for OU people, that would be just at the end of the Oxbow Bridge before you get to the Convocation Center.
By Porter Hall.
By Porter Hall, if you know the names of the buildings. Okay, one of the things that, just so everyone knows, we are actually looking at some improvements there, we're calling it the Lights Between the Bridges Project and I just wanted to share that with everybody tonight, we are looking at using the same type of lighting that is on top of the Oxbow Bridge and extending it down to Shaver Street. So that corridor there then will have a continuous look in terms of the lighting. The lighting will also ensure that there's better visibility there. One of the things that I'm hearing off and on, this by the way is the number one issue when I'm out in the community that people bring up to me is, what can we do about Richland? It's just so dangerous and I have to stop and I don't know what to do and, you know, people forget the laws and some people don't look and everybody has their headphones on and it just goes on and on. And I'm sure other council members have heard similar things. So it's a huge safety issue, so in terms of the lighting, we hope that that will improve that and then we're also looking at the sidewalks being improved along there. And this is in partnership with Ohio University and I've talked about, okay, so we're looking at costs in the area of $378,000 until we actually get estimates and the lighting is put together and everything, we won't know the exact, but those are some of the costs that we're looking at at this point. I'll let administration talk a little bit here, but anybody on council have any additional comments? Like I said, this is one of the issues that people come up to me and ask me about, what can we do and it's our city street and I guess we can talk about that a little bit.
So would this be replacing the most old original concrete lamp posts that are down there right now?
Yes.
Look like they were probably built around the same era as the Oxbow Bridge was.
We call them Cobra and actually I did get clarification from Andy, the lights will be like the bridge over the hockey.
Right.
As opposed to the bridge.
They're very similar.
They'll be near as close so that you really won't be able to see it from space as well, about 50 feet apart. And then the other component was the high university paying for sidewalk repairs as they, as needed in that area.
And we'll do the curbs?
Always.
Always.
And then it'll help reduce like the light, or light pollution, so it'll keep it light shining down.
Yes, that's correct, the new lighting lights are like that.
Part of it's the lighting on the side where the sidewalks are, so a pass of sidewalks as well, probably some of the landscape would need to be adapted, just that seems to be the problem, it is in the evening.
I'm just going to add too, a lot of concerns along those levels and I wonder if it's worth my discussion with someone whose area of expertise succeeds mine with this and perhaps our Public Works Director is that person, but I don't know if rumble strips would be beneficial to alert people that are going downhill because it's easy to pick up speed as you're traveling down the bridge or down Richland Avenue downhill and perhaps just the presence of those few little rumbles would acknowledge or let the driver know to be cautious or safety. You see them oftentimes as you're having to come to a stop sign on back country roads where you're able to travel 55 miles an hour and you're approaching a stop sign at a four-way intersection. Now I know it's not an intersection, it's a pedestrian crossing, so I don't know, but I do agree that it needs, the safety needs to be addressed there and I believe lighting is a good start.
We also know that Bobcat Lane's going to be opening soon, so that adds to the mix.
Which would make it an intersection.
When I came into office, it was not a crosswalk. Do you think that was a mistake to make it a pedestrian, to yield pedestrian crosswalk?
No, I don't.
Okay, just wondering, would that have improved if it was not a crosswalk and the pedestrian would have to.
People were already crossing, I mean.
Yes, but they would do it with a lot more attentiveness.
You think so? I mean, I think one of the problems is.
Having been hit by a car at age 21, I know there's a way of learning outside the class.
Well, you hope, you hope people don't have to, I think that there's two issues. There's pedestrian attentiveness issues which may need to be addressed and lighting would be one of them because when you, if lighting suddenly changes, you may pay attention and there's vehicles and so there may be things that we can address from the pedestrian part too, of making it so that they have to pay attention when they go across the road. Because that's a huge issue when you, my husband's office overlooks that and so when he's like having lunch, he can just sit there and, you know, count the people who just kind of walk blindly through that crosswalk. So there may be things that are being adopted in other communities that address this issue, kind of rumble strips for pedestrians sort, so looking at those sort of things.
Crossing guard.
Well, not a crossing guard, actually you can do choke points for pedestrians where, you know.
Can we have a policeman at the side and?
Well, where you, the sidewalk comes down and when you want to cross, there's, you know, planter strips or something that says, oh, if you're just walking through and wham, you run into something, you kind of pay attention. So it kind of makes people.
It channels.
It channels them and makes them pay attention because they don't, I mean, I don't know how many people walk through there with their, you know, paying attention to their phone and I also notice that everybody wears black at night and it's just really hard to see people.
I think, I also have an office that looks down on Richland Avenue and unfortunately I was in my office when the two, one serious accident with a pedestrian and then that was when I saw improvements, improvements went into place at that crosswalk and improvements have continually moved forward with that particular crosswalk there. So I have seen behavior changes, I agree that there is, should be an effort and I believe that there probably is to where OU is continually educating and saying, look, you know, this is a dangerous intersection, you're crossing Richland, it's 25 miles an hour. You know, technically Ohio revised code, and this comes from Chief Pyle, is that not until someone's foot is on that crosswalk does that law come into place while they're standing on the curb, you know? But I think the lighting is going to make a big improvement. To improve the lighting down there, I know that there's already solar operated crosswalk signs and I think there's been some improvements there as well. JPAC has thoroughly looked into this whole process, even when Oxbow was being renovated, I know that JPAC thought about extending a tasteful Jersey barrier down through the center of Richland, further down to the front of Porter Hall to try to get people to stop crossing over because students cross all over the place, you know, as soon as they get across Oxbow Ridge, they cut across Richland Avenue. It's just a, it's a troubling area, I agree, but I think that lighting is a good first step that's.
So I think that's a bigger statement to the community too, that it is not something that's being done, it is being studied and looked at and constantly as money, you know, allows to be considered and, you know, improved. So I just think we need to address our people in the community who ask those questions, it makes them very nervous and I know sometimes certain parts of the day you have to change your course and go different directions than right through the middle of town, I know I do sometimes, so.
As you stated, this is good study, this is in progress right now with the university, so we're working on it.
Right, and so the ordinance will discuss that when it's time, when the funding stream is together and.
Correct.
Right.
We have a sign of project and a little complaint.
Right, thank you. Any, we're done, we'll move on, yeah, Jennifer?
I'd just add that I think we need to bear in mind that we have different perspectives when we approach this intersection, whether we're in our vehicles or whether we're experiencing the intersection as pedestrians, because a lot of times I think that people who are experiencing such intersections in their vehicles feel a great deal of animosity toward the pedestrians because they're slowing them down and causing them to have to stop. When you experience the intersection as a pedestrian, which we all do at some point, it's a very different feeling. You feel threatened by this dangerous vehicle coming toward you. In many other states, you know, the car culture is very different and pedestrians have much more safety so that when they put that toe out in the intersection, all the cars come screeching to a halt, as opposed to many here which seem to put the pedal to the metal and screech right through. So, you know, I just urge people to remember that sometimes we're all pedestrians, sometimes we're all behind the wheel and so put a different hat on sometimes when you're feeling that urge to put the pedal down and get where you're going a little faster.
Mike?
I agree with Jennifer, a good point that you brought up, but also agree with Michelle because first time in the council, that's the first word that I heard from people that I'm talking with, is what are you going to do about Richland Avenue? And I said, well, no, I said, we're looking at it now. And I said, I would defer to Michelle Pappy, she's the Transportation Committee Chairperson.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, all right, our next item is, for some time we've been talking about Stimson Avenue, studies have been done for years. We are looking at putting together an ODOT Small Cities Grant, which I want to, even at getting, before we get into the conversation here, is to state that our population here in Athens is creeping up and soon we are going to be over the 25,000 point, which will knock us out of the Small Cities Grant opportunity. And so with that said, we're looking to move forward on a capital improvement project for the Stimson Avenue corridor. And that would include, I'll just read off what we know it will include, Streetscape project to include water and sewer rehab, overhead utility relocation, pavement rehabilitation, accessible sidewalks, decorative lighting, signal infrastructure there at Stimson and East State Street intersection, there will likely be a signal warrant for the Stimson intersection and. There will likely be a signal warrant for the Stimson intersection and Mill Street Village access road. And there is conversation about, roundabout at this location also to be looked at and reviewed in the assessment and engineering when we look at that. And then the Stimson Bridge over the Hocking River needs structural and aesthetic repairs. And then on a bigger vision, we do know that ODOT is also looking at the interchange of thirty-three with Stimson Avenue. We all know that there's difficulties there. It's, serious accidents or near accidents occur there, especially when you're going over and wanting to go north or east or west. I guess it would be on thirty-three. It's difficult with that crossover to fifty there as well. So, capital project list with a cost of probably, okay, hold on folks, five million. This is a preliminary cost, depends on final scope and preferred alternatives. We may be eligible to pursue a municipal bridge program for the bridge work, which is funding outside of the Small Cities Program. So, we're trying to put this together. EPW is trying to look at getting this together finalized in February with a, available for a project FY nineteen. It is 2015. So, it is a ways down the road, but again, as we know, when we're talking about these projects, they're, we're planning for four to five years in advance. So, anyone on council want to have a conversation?
No, I agree.
Ms. Nice?
I would like to ask the question that the Stimson is the most of our bridges, correct?
Correct.
Original construction, but it's still needing structural repairs?
Well, part of it was also the pedestrian enhancements because...
That answers my second question.
We have to keep them walk to certain natural sites in the area and also to get over to the other property that still has a portion for recreational. People take their dogs, go get a river and what have you. So, we'd like to include those.
And that leads me to my second question, which is about, and you've answered part of it, with the enhancements for pedestrians and also bike lanes? I was wondering, because I know Andy's been, and the city's been great about incorporating bike lanes when they're also...
Stimson Avenue's right of way is really, really narrow.
It's very narrow.
I mean, we do wanna look at a beautiful streetscape, but we are gonna have some...
Challenges.
...convenience there, yes.
I have a question. How does this tie in though with the South Green improvements that OU was planning for itself?
Well, they've already completed their street as we know and...
But you just wanna go all the way to Stimson eventually.
Eventually. I don't know if they'll go into the railroad corridor there or not. We, we're not exactly sure how they're going to manage that piece, but that's where the roundabout comes in and, you know, funneling traffic that way through the campus and then off and onto the, to the highway.
For engineering ease, when they say a signal warrant, that is the study to see whether it not warrants a signal, which would then be able, we would be able to submit for a roundabout as an alternative to a signal.
Gotcha.
Because I want signal, I thought we're having a roundabout.
Right now.
I know, there's a lot more roundabouts in, in Ohio. I think there's been a, a start. I, I think that it's really important to realize that this is one of the major gateways into Athens. And right now, it's a fairly, it's not as bad as Richland, however, Richland doesn't have as much gateway. And when people come off thirty-three and you have all the, the people going to the university and this is the way, and I, I think, I would encourage OU to continue going out to Stimson there because it reduces the amount of, of vehicles going through the Mill Street area and makes it safer.
Richland.
Well, well, going through down Mill Street and accessing the, the university that way. And so, I think it makes sense to look at it as a whole block and look at sort of streetscape and complete the streets. Because I know that's Andy's pretty much policy is complete the streets, which is a whole process of looking at pedestrian, bicycle, and those sort of, you know, pedestrian vehicle usage together and stuff, so...
And of course, completing the infrastructure underneath the street at the same time, which is also a Mr. Stone...
Yes.
...way of doing things. Mike?
Hi. She was just talking about the Stimson Avenue traffic and, and from a walker and utilizing the bike path and walking through the university every day. It, it's, I've noticed the, the amount of traffic now that is actually coming that way and utilizing it because it's, it's so quick, you don't have to go through, the river apartments through there. It's, it, it's a wonderful lineup that they've done that because it's, so much more traffic is going through there now than there was in the past.
Right.
It makes those neighborhoods nicer.
It does.
You don't have all that crazy traffic.
Exactly.
Makes them more residential, so...
Okay. So, that's kind of been our first discussion of this and I'm sure there'll be many more, but we do wanna move forward with at least doing some design work and getting the funds going for that. Okay. The next on the miscellaneous, we'll just go ahead and move since we're talking about corridors to the city, is Richland South. I wanted to give an update on that because everyone's asking all the time. We're looking at a start date towards the end of February. Phase one is work on the east side of the street, which includes a section, a new waterline, sanitary sewer, sewer relocation, storm sewer installation, decorative lighting, sidewalks, and new pavement. So, for you southsiders, that would be which side of the street? East side is?
The side the sun comes up?
I think that's the, I wanna say McCappy's.
McCappy's.
McCappy's side.
North is always north.
The don, the donut side. Okay. Phase two, work on the west side of the street, which includes storm sewer installation, decorative lighting, sidewalks, new pavement, scheduled to occur between late May to early August. February to late May is the east side. Just for a lot of the businesses and, and folks there on that corridor, Shelley and Sands, when they moved to this site, their community liaison will be meeting with businesses, property owners, residents, to discuss their timeline and what they're working on and service connection time, sanitary sewer work, all of that is kind of managed with that. And of course, our EPW people will be involved with that. Yes.
Instead of decorative lighting, I'd like to, to say that it's not decorative, sounds like a light fountain, that it's safety lighting. I mean, better lighting will be better for pedestrians. So, I think that the lighting will be decorative, but it's also safety. So, I, I know people are like, well, why are you doing, you know...
That makes it sound like it's fancy lighting of some sort.
And so, you know, this is, this is lighting that helps ensure pedestrian, bicycle, and motor vehicle safety.
And it's not ugly.
Yeah. Well, and it will just, it will be in line with our light coordinances and I just think that it pays little heed to safety when you call it decorative lighting and...
Okay. Any other, Steve?
I just wanna say, thank goodness, this is finally rolling again. Because, you know, for me, driving up and down through that corridor, because I live up there, you know, I often look to see who's having to navigate down through the sidewalks and sometimes having to go into the street because of the state of those sidewalks. So, I know the Commission on Disabilities has been watching this closely and wanting to know when is it moving forward. So, I'm just glad to hear that February looks like it might be the, the...
As long as our weather holds out, I'm assuming some of this is weather contingent.
Always.
Sure.
Floods too.
Floods. There's always floods.
In Boston.
And again, you always, you're gonna have problems, of course, with all the curb cuts there. It is a drive-through, you know, area in terms of theater of where those things are. So, that's always gonna be an impediment to the sidewalk use. One of the things, components we've been discussing with Andy Stone is the installation of fiber optics, of why we do this project. The concept there is that if we look forward to try and putting something together for the citywide fiber optics, we may as well start building it now. Well, we probably won't be able to utilize it immediately, although, you know, we, staff meeting, conversation wise, is that there are, there, you know, Station Two has always been spotty in terms of communication, the internet, just because it's in a, it's in the hollow, so to speak. So, this probably the first use if we have any, anything going forward at that. I just mentioned that, that would be in, in the mix as well. So, we're trying to look forward on that in the future and we're meeting, having meetings eventually around that.
Soon. So, we may come forward with some requested modifications for additional appropriations once we find out the feasibility of the installation.
Is this sort of part of a, of a smart cities program or project?
It is intelligent community, I believe is what they call it.
Yes, we've been talking to Dublin, who started their fiber optic system. I think you both, Steve and Chris, were both at the Econ 101 where I had a conversation with the economic development member of Dublin and the city. And they've been installing this stuff for about fifteen years and they, they rent it out as a result. I don't think we'll get there immediately, but the idea is to start thinking about that because there'll come a time, we wanna be, be connected that way.
So, to echo that, I'm sorry, do we need to consider that as well as we're making plans for Stimson?
Probably so.
And would that make sense, obviously?
This is our first model. We'd like to get it all the way uptown. So, that's the first model.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask too, and I, but I assume, which is dangerous, that it was part of the, the Stimson Avenue plan that, that's, that's further out, I think.
The other thing to mention is I believe Ohio University has a major picture line. I think there's a communication issue there too, isn't there with the fiber optics? Somehow I thought that was...
I don't know for sure. I think, I know they have some around, but I don't know how much.
Okay.
And this would be, realize their, their stuff would not be going down. We're starting at Dairy Lane going down to the South Y, or rather Canterbury Railway. So, yeah, concept there is that they probably don't have a lot of infrastructure down that, that far.
We actually were trying to bring it up along with the same, the, what are we calling this?
Lights and not...
The bridge lights? Light between the bridges project.
Lights between the bridges.
That'll all speak a problem. But there's a lot of utilities that the university has already underneath those sidewalks.
Right. Right. We talked a couple meetings ago about the pre-qualified consultant legislation for engineering and we need to also work to, for Athens to be in compliance with ODOT's guidelines for direct selecting a consultant. And so, in order to do that, we need to move forward with an ordinance with where Athens is similar to, city adopts the most current ODOT pre-qualified consultant list to direct select where appropriate consulting firms to assist with engineering projects and maintain compliance with ODOT's requirements for direct selection. And that the consultant list provides a list of firms for professional engineering services, environmental services, and right-of-way services that have been reviewed and approved as qualified for each category of services. So, we need to move forward with that legislation. And I'm not sure if we'll be doing that on the next meeting. They're still kind of vetting that process.
No, actually, we're requesting this.
We can move forward. Okay. So, we're ready to go then?
And Debbie was provided the same copy of this in terms of language.
Okay. Any comments on that? Yes.
Would this in any way hamstring the, the city to choose someone else that would not be on the list?
We have to choose someone from their list if there's that ODOT funding related to it. We feel that it actually broadens our scope in terms of our abilities. We will still go through the process. I had this discussion with the city engineer from the direct select. It's just that we can choose, these three are the three we're gonna interview and then rate them based on the qualifications.
Because I think most times, if you put these out for bid, if you do it, you're, you're still gonna get the same people that ODOT has already done pre-qualified. So, it, it's actually one less thing that you have to do, which makes it a lot better. So, I, I would agree to go forward with it.
And I assume...
I feel that I didn't answer your question.
No, no, I'm just, you answered my question and I understand. It's just the, it's the idea that the, that somewhere in the state bureaucracy, for whatever political reasons, certain firms get on a list and some don't. And, and there's no real way that you could guarantee that, that doesn't happen.
There's some pretty high bars. I know Mike can speak to that as well, in terms of them being able to show that they have the capacity, that they've designed, they've built and, and met these in the past.
I'm sure. I'm skeptical.
Everything's been...
You get my age, you become cynical.
So, I, I would add one thing to this. In our contract, if, if we're allowed to do that, is that they are made aware that we have a city income tax and if they are here for that many days, that they have, they have to pay that to their employees. I don't know if we can put that in a contract, but...
I believe that was, it's included in the contract registration language, but I'll check on that.
I mean, it's just, you know...
I understand.
No, because if not, you actually can include that in the contract.
Okay. Any other comments on that? I think we're ready to move forward then, Debbie, with the language and, okay. East State Street update, there's been some questions about where we are with that. Parsons Brinkerhoff, which if you recall, when we had the public hearings on the diverging diamond, if you all recall those public hearings, are expected to complete the additional analysis requested by ODOT sometime in February. So, we should be getting word on that. We have received the two million in Small Cities program funds and are seeking two million five hundred and ninety-eight thousand in safety program funds for the project. The cost estimate is five million seven hundred and forty-eight thousand. Other funding will be coming from our street rehab, TIF, and Ohio Public Works lines.
And do we know the approximate date on this one as compared to, you know, the Stimson of February, or fiscal year nineteen? Is this, this is before that, isn't it?
Since fiscal year seventeen, which may be able to begin as early as, remember the state fiscal year is that July, July of twenty sixteen, so...
Okay. Thank you.
And once this, we receive, once we're awarded a design, we'll be engineering begins.
So, and I think the plan is to begin summer twenty sixteen, if everything comes together.
If everything, the stars align.
Okay. Good. So, then, South Richland will be ready to go and then we'll, people will avoid East State Street.
Yeah.
Okay. I think that is all that I have. Mayor, do you have an additional item? Oh, yes, the bus. I'm sorry. How could I forget the buses?
I had a conversation with Michael Lockman.
Our final, yes, go ahead.
Okay. Essentially, I met, I think it was last Friday or Thursday. Essentially, he was, you know, he'd say, okay, what's the situation with the buses? How's it going? Actually, we were also talking about bus shelters, so it kind of bridged out all over the place because we still have a PO out there for bus shelters that's been hanging for about three years, maybe two. Why he mentioned that the, the, the state put out extra bus types and one is a low, what he calls a low-floor vehicle. And this means that with a low-floor vehicle, you don't require a lift, a wheelchair lift. He's interested in buying, purchasing those two buses instead of the, the original dollar amount has gone up. That's the bottom line, tell you the truth. But in terms of maintenance, he figures that'd be saving the weight because a lift is less heavy, it doesn't require as much mechanics to maintain. So, he's, he's talked about additional upfront cost for this would be about twenty-three-five per bus, which means we have had, put an ordinance through, we've amended that ordinance once already. We have a limit of like thirty, one thirty-two or somewhere in that range. He's asking for an alternative increase of one to one-seventy-two. He has said that he was actually, because we have already set our budget at this, that he will look for funds elsewhere or else I'll guess hap-cap will eat the cost, one way or the other. So, I'm really asking...
Is that what you're suggesting? That hap-cap eat the cost if he can't find his funds elsewhere?
No, I, I'm hoping that he'll be creative. I, I think he, I think he believes that there are people out, there are organizations out there that will help.
Okay.
Stakeholders, I should say.
It is forty-seven thousand.
Yes.
Yes.
Forty-seven thousand, twenty-three per bus, two buses.
Right.
Maintenance wise, you think it'll, it'll stay longer, keep up longer and save money in a while.
Less weight, they're, they weigh less because...
Less wear and pay.
Right.
So, I guess the request would be to amend this again to increase it to that amount.
So, I'd like to hear what council thinks about that. Ms. Cocker?
Well, I would add that an additional benefit as to, you know, making the buses will be lighter, but it would also decrease the wait time, you know, getting on the bus is gonna be less of a production if you don't have to use a lift. I mean, I, I can't speak to specifics of how many minutes each interchange might take, but I would imagine that it would, it would be an efficiency increase.
As well as those who have trouble walking. It's just not because of wheelchairs, it's a question of getting on the bus and having to step up stairs.
I don't know if anybody's been in a bus like this, but I've been in a large bus like this, not necessarily a city bus. And Steve?
Yeah, I'm personally in support of this for a number of reasons, but one is, again, the mechanics behind us. I mean, these lifts break down, they are heavy. This wouldn't be happening. I've spoken to Michael about possibly getting, you know, looking into kneeling buses, which is what a lot of cities use, which that's a really high-ticket item to go kneeling buses. This sounds like a nice compromise with having something that becomes fully ADA accessible. And again, I agree with Member Cochran saying that it could potentially reduce time, stop time, you know, to have to, you know, activate the hydraulic lift and everything.
Mike?
Again, I echo the same thing Councilwoman Cochran just did. I've actually had a chance to talk, and only because I've dealt with the same issues with hydraulics, with the lift system that they have, it is very expensive to maintain and to operate. And the added weight that you're putting and what it does to the city streets, it's very bad on the city streets anyway, just being a bus. But then with the added weight on there, the added cost of maintenance that you're going to incur with it, it actually, and I would be in support of this because just by knowing it, that it's a very good thing to go with.
My recommendation would be to amend it and see if, I don't know if we want to go through all three readings, but I recommend we start that process and have him come back and give us feedback of how he's going to make the difference.
Maybe have him come to council?
I wouldn't have any problem with that.
I would also welcome input from the Disabilities Commission as well, because I'm not the person using a lift, I'm not the person at the moment, I'm temporarily able-bodied, so I'm not the person that would be hopping on the bus, needing the benefit of other, so I would be curious to hear input from Disabilities Commission on this, but I also realize that those that are in the know suggest that this might be a better, a better bus. So if that's the case, I would support that too.
Yeah, I would second Councilman Butler's suggestion there, that sounds really good.
What's the timeline? I mean, where are they?
This is another one of those, I think it's a six...
They order them ahead of time?
Right.
But do you have to put the contract in? I mean, is this an amending, a contract, or?
No, as far as I know, the contract hasn't started out.
Okay, so it's not, not something that he has to undo and then do again?
I would contend it's just, you know, checking the numbers in order of affordability and then...
That's where I'm at, the affordability, because, I mean, I have no qualms with having these better buses, they sound great, but do we have that in our budget? We have some other budget constraints right now. And getting some assurances from Michael that he's beaten the pavement to get some other funders on line here. That would be my concern, is this additional forty-seven thousand. But, I mean, honestly, it's a great idea. It's just that we have the money.
Yeah, I think if you could find it, it would actually be a benefit, because it's going to save you money in the long run.
In the long run, no doubt, it's going to save us money.
But it's coming up with that chunk of change.
Yeah, it's paying now or pay later, so I think it's that.
If Michael, we'd like to, I'd like to hear from Michael, the certitude, whether he's going to get...
So I guess I'm hearing, are we amending next week, or do we want to wait for Michael to come and speak to us?
I would amend next week and then just give it to three readings and find out where it shakes out.
Okay.
And that would be the...
Fair enough.
And the Commission on Disabilities meets February eighteenth, so we're talking a week from...
Fair enough.
A week out, so there's time. I respect your recommendation, Member Butler. I think that's wise to have the Commission on Disabilities weigh in. I think it would also be interesting to hear from the Athens senior citizens as well, because this, you know, this aids all, I guess. I can have my daughter's weigh in.
Okay, so we'll work with Debbie to amend the language. All right. Thank you. Any other items?
I don't have any others.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. We'll go on to city and safety services with Councilmember Patterson, who's chair.
Thank you. President Nicely, we have a couple things tonight. To start with, another Essence of Athens art implementation project that's...
Our award-winning Athens. You have to now preface it.
I stand corrected. Our award-winning Essence of Athens project plant. Member Cochran is going to go ahead and bring this forward.
And this has to do with a potential site, which is our potentially award-winning wastewater treatment plant. I believe I was once quoted in saying it's hard to get excited about sewage, but I've since learned a lot about wastewater treatment and it can be exciting indeed, especially if you put some public art on the facilities. And so as all of our citizens surely know, at this point, we have a major project going on at the wastewater treatment plant. It's very visible from the bike, the bike way, which is of course one of the gems in our community. And so two of the primary clarifiers, which clarifier is another word for big tanks that clarify the wastewater, and these are the two north-facing tanks. So as you go around the corner on the bike way, away from the wastewater treatment plant and toward the university, these are facing, facing north, facing the bridge on Stimson Avenue. So the idea is that this can be a potential site for public art through the Essence of Athens project. And we're in the very preliminary stages right now and want to support the administration and AMAC, the Municipal Arts Commission, in potential, a potential RFP to elicit some public works of art, which would likely be large-scale murals. And at this point, we don't really know what the cost would be of such a project, but this is something we're beginning to explore. So we're just putting that out there to the community.
Would this be covered under the requirement one percent for art, because it's public art?
Again, it's, the utilities and transportation projects are exempt, but it is the right thing to do. We did indeed have in advance, because we wanted to get the construction done before we, you know, send in artists, as it were. So you'll notice these two panels, you can see them where they don't have that block stamping effect on them. And then I believe, did I send you some dimensions, Steve, late today? Working with the city engineer, for example, the mural that Eilidr Deldrich did at the roundabout tunnel was actually more like three hundred and sixty square feet, and these two panels together are just a little over two hundred square feet. Might be a little more challenging because of height and what have you, but we funded that for fifteen thousand dollars, so we're trying to see. And again, I continue to ask the question, I know we don't have an answer here at the table, but this whole issue about how do we continue to fund public art and public art endeavors, you know, as the money goes down?
You did send me the dimensions.
Sorry, it was probably late.
It's fine. We're looking at, on the clarifiers, approximately a hundred and four square foot of space.
Total on both sides, or just each clarifier?
Each panel.
Each panel.
Okay.
Well, when, I would encourage, even though public utilities and such are exempt from one percent, there's no reason why we can't put that in as our own kind of budget when we're looking at these in the future.
We, and it was funded, the previous one was funded, I'll have to check, but I believe maybe a portion from the general fund or...
Right. But I think that's an important thing when we're looking at planning in the future for all these different projects that we're talking about, that it's just like complete the streets is now our, our kind of norm, is that complete the streets with art also should be a norm when we're going through. And I think the Essence of Athens really helps to put that.
I will say, on West Union, we kind of took the low-hanging fruit and got the stamp in place and what have you, but of course, we knew that we're having that stormwater improvement structure that's going to have the interpretive sign. Richland South, Andy's identified a piece of land next to the car wash, you know, that green? So, you know, once again, we'd like that construction to get done and completed before releasing AMAC. But AMAC is also asking at this time because, because of the advance notice for them to put out their RFP and a call for proposals and provide that, and so that they know that they're not getting in there until late summer, but...
I would think on a, on something like that too, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, ladies.
Is that it doesn't necessarily have to be a mural, you could do some kind of sculpture kind of effect there as well. So everyone always thinks murals, but you could put some type of sculpture there, even a moving type of sculpture, which would be kind of interesting there, you could see it from the highway or whatever. So I would hope that anybody who's looking at submitting would not just think, oh, well, all we want's murals. So, I mean, and, you know, I don't know cost.
I hear what you're saying, but I, I mean, I'm painfully aware of...
Cost?
No. The modifications to what we'd re-press for proposal. And then, I mean, that's what we've charged the Municipal Art Commission to do, and if they determine the language and that within that, and the other caveat was just, it has to be something that the city engineers is, don't use that material because it'll be gone in the next two years because of the, I mean, it's still a corrosive nature of the operations of the wastewater treatment.
Right, got it.
Yeah, if we wanted a moving sculpture, I guess we could put windows in.
Well, and, you know, be educational.
Yeah, and I was going to add two things. A, I wanted to applaud the mayor's office, specifically the city service safety director, who from the start has acknowledged that this would be a potential site for public art. And so I've been in meetings with you where this came up from the very beginning in looking at this project. So again, I applaud your support of this idea of public art, way before we even printed the Essence of Athens and pursued that campaign and that project. But likewise, along the lines here of public art, there is discussion among AMAC and looking at legislation that's been enacted in other states, small communities in Idaho, where a percent for public art is tied to capital improvements projects. So there could be an ordinance that we could create and pass as a body that would type of large-scale projects. So we're looking into that in AMAC and more will be revealed soon. Thank you.
I agree with everything that you said, Member Butler, with re-exploring the one percent, you know, because I often look at things like this, art, you know, art helps drive the economy, because especially through tourism, you know, once you branded yourself or you have some interesting art elements in the city, it'll bring the people in and possibly exploring the TGT, the change in guest tax, or something along those lines.
And we have the data now supporting it from the research that was conducted two or three years ago. So we have the, we have the data that supports the economic impact of the arts.
You're talking about the arts and economic prosperity for study?
Right, thank you, yes. Mayor?
Realize when you start talking about percentage for, let's say one percent for an eighteen million dollar project, what, are we talking about a hundred and eighty thousand? Okay, so do you want to tack that onto our present debt load? And that's why, that's why we're talking about where the funds come from. I mean, it'd be nice to say, yes, this would be great, let's throw another hundred and eighty thousand into our debt, which of course we're already, you know, working on. The question would arise is, you know, would that be better used elsewhere for police, a fire, et cetera, et cetera? So you're always going to get that counterargument.
Right.
So when you start saying, okay, we're going to hamstring ourselves for a requirement for every structure that we put in, utility, bridge, road, you could see where I think the actual improvements might slow down because we always have to add that percentage. And it doesn't seem like a large amount, and we haven't discussed, you know, we have discussed before how much it's going to cost to pay off this debt. But that's what, you know, you have to, you have to weigh these things.
Right.
In terms of future legislation, and I have to echo that and may have stated before, we don't think it's appropriate and may not even be allowed to add this cost of this public art to the debt that the citizens will be paying for the next twenty years. So that's where we get back to how do we fund.
Right. The devil's in the details, obviously.
A hundred and eighty thousand is indeed, you know, an officer and a half.
I think the idea is that it's a project, it's something that we don't think is afterthought when we're doing projects, that we recognize the economic development aspects of having public art. And whether it's one percent when we put into it, but just recognizing that it shouldn't be an afterthought when we're doing these big projects. And I think that we've done a pretty good job, you know, that, that most of these projects have thought about it. However, in the future, it would be good to, you know, continue in that, in that vein of progress.
Mm-hmm, no problem.
And public, right, and this is a future discussion, which we will have obviously more at length, because public art can also be functional art. You think of the Trevi Fountain, or you think of the Spanish Steps in Rome, they're steps, they're utilitarian, but yet people go to see them as well, and it's considered large structural artistic elements.
So we would like to work with identifying funding and maybe having an ordinance come forward with the new, you know, the next appropriations ordinance.
I have a clarification, because we kind of talked about this, and one of our citizens brought this forward, is a point of clarification when we were talking, actually introducing last week, the wraps, the traffic signal control box wraps. And that is that the funding line that we were talking about was from the Athens enhancement, which actually is revenue that went in via the Athens station, it's an agreement, and that it's not tax dollars that are paying for that, you know, per se, it's not income tax. Just wanted to make sure that was, was clear to everybody. I have a couple more things, two more items that are more informational, information that I have recently received that really kind of speaks to the efforts that have been in place for a long time, but in terms of traffic enforcement throughout the city, because often, as I've been told, that a lot of calls do come in with concerns about the lack of traffic enforcement throughout the city. And so these were forwarded on to me, like I said, and to kind of give everyone a sense over the week of February second to the sixth, so this week. There were twenty-two traffic stops, eight crashes, one motor assist. I noticed that a lot of the, the speed awareness monitors have been moving around, there's one right now up on Old Coach Road, your neighborhood, which has been effective in significantly reducing speeding along through that route, but we see them throughout the I also have information from the week before, which was, you know, twenty-one stops, four warnings, four citations, three arrests of motorists. So our police traffic enforcement is going on, is alive and well in the city. I know the chief pilot has been very pleased with the efforts that have been moving forward, so I just wanted to make sure that that reaches the level of awareness of the citizens.
And we are putting a, trying to put a list together of sites. We really only have two SAMs, one's permanently on East State Street, the other one is in motion all the time, we're moving it around. Right now at Old Coach, previous to that was Madison. So you could feed us some locations you think are appropriate. The limitations, of course, have to do with the number of lanes, because if you have a multi-lane situation, many times they'll try reading both lanes at the same time, as well as position of signage. The idea is we're sticking out a sign somewhere, and that limits the locations we can put there. But if we can get a calendar list of these, we could move them around repeatedly. There, I would like to see more of these, acquire more of these over time. The question is, you know, the maintenance issues and how long it takes. I know the university has one as well, you can see it by Peden there. And I think they're effective, at least for people being aware of how fast they're going. So it's, I think it's worthwhile to invest in a few more of those over time. But again, if you have areas of interest. And again, it's, I like watching, I get the data regularly just to see what's going on, and I find it impressive how some of the high speeds are probably our police officers or emergency vehicles, like the fire and the ambulances too. Just because there are some outliers there, where you're saying, why is somebody going forty-five in a twenty-five zone? If it was consistent, then that would be a problem, but, you know, just when you start looking at it and saying, okay, so what's being played out there? But I think it's a, it's a one way to actually get a view of what's, how the, how the structure, how people are enforcing laws and how they're following laws.
In that vein, I would just say, you know, you get a lot of comments, I'm sure, you Far Easters on State Street there, on the four lane, and, you know, how many actual citations are... and, you know, how many actual citations occur there. We know people are speeding there all the time. So that would be interesting to break that down too, is just to know, you know, are people being cited on, from 33 out, on the four-lane part of State Street?
I would just like to say that I appreciate, as a parent, the vigilance. I, I noticed that Steve had on his list the monitoring of school bus routes, and there has been some questions in the, in the parent community, and so maybe if City Service Director Paul Horeen Mosley could just clarify how that works. Because I know when I see a, a police officer following a school bus, it makes me feel safer, but some parents might wonder what's going on. So if you could just shed a little light on that for folks.
Indeed, what happened was they received complaints from the bus drivers that cars were trying to go around and what have you. So the, it serves as a really good escort, so it was really indeed to ensure that everybody else around was in compliance. And frankly, this morning in staff meeting, they were getting called down to Central because there's.
West Elementary.
Yeah, West Elementary, and told that there's a, a lot of double parking, which becomes dangerous for the children to drive at the pickup time. So we're gonna have a conversation with the school because of our safety meetings. We have a good relationship with all the school principals. So it's a good sign if you see a patrol officer. I think a couple might have been cited or at least warned, Steve. I can't remember from the data on the, the school bus location.
Yeah, there's, there were citations on that and, and warnings.
So that's enough. Hopefully that'll be enough that people won't do that again. And we do constantly get East State Street. It's not that we're not patrolling East State Street. That becomes a little more challenging in terms of the enforcement, where you park the car and how they angle with the radar gun, kind of issue. So they, they're trying to do it in a manner where they can actually have a citable offense that can be brought forward into court, so.
The difficulty of that, of course, is positioning a car at a certain location that they can actually jump out, you know, get somebody. You know yourself trying to jump out of an exit there.
Yeah, I noticed some interesting driving, so they, people didn't have to wait at the Charles Street light to turn right onto State Street. They were cutting through the parking lot of the business. Like, while I was doing business there, there were like three cars that didn't want to wait because it's kind of an open parking, and they were cutting through the parking lot, so they didn't have to wait on the li, at the light and enter onto State.
Yeah.
And I asked the owner, and he said, oh yeah, that happens all the time. So, yeah, we know that Charles there is a difficult intersection.
As, as well, actually, that's at the regional transportation planning. I think that was one of the sites, high sites for this city. And again, the speed's not high most of the time there. It's not really that excessive. It's just the number of cars and the impatience of many people there.
Right.
The other side of it is actually pulling a car over somewhere on East State Street. Realize if you say, I'm gonna pull a car over and proceed to, you might become more of a danger to all the other drivers at that point. So it has to be a balance. I, I know they can do better enforcement further out because there's less traffic there and it's traffic doesn't pick up there.
That's what the business owner said, by the way. He said, yeah, they usually are working down at that end of the street, not right here in our end of the street and.
It's a congestion problem.
It's a safety issue a lot of times as to where to pull the vehicle over.
But there are always places to turn, you know, somebody can turn into the community center, somebody can turn into one of those businesses. I was pulled over on my way home from a city council meeting.
How fast were you going?
To Home Street. Fortunately, I wasn't speeding. It was a taillight, so I thanked the officer for helping me realize I had a taillight out. But, you know.
I agree with you wholeheartedly. There are multiple places to, to wreck them, to get off of East State Street. So here's your ticket. It's just a matter of all the other things in advance of things, so.
Great. Member Pappy?
Well, did you receive the email here, you and I received it, on Housing Matters? It just came this evening. So there was something posted in the newspaper. Did anyone see this about affordable housing event to be held? And it was incorrectly reported in the newspaper. It's actually at the community center. But what this resident is saying is, it doesn't really clearly state who, the name of any of his home matters. And it are, they're questioning, is this a responsible organization? And it's the trademark of the National Neighbor Works Association. So we, it is curious. When I read the article in the newspaper, I was like, who is this group? And do we know anything about them? And is it a for-profit organ, you know, organization? And so a couple restaurants are providing some local, you know, local food snacks. So there was some real question is, who's the target? And is it affordable? Is it needs accessible? What, what's the issue? So, and I don't recall the date of this event. It's coming up. Does anybody else recall the date? It was in the messenger. And so I thought this was a reasonable question because we don't know who this organization is. It's kind of like everybody's dealing with these energy letters right now and asking everybody. So here this, this resident is wondering about, what is this Housing Matters?
Well, and the article made it look like, it said that OU was hosting that.
Which is.
But it's not an OU property where they're having it. So it was confusing.
It was very confusing.
Whether it was a typo or, so maybe people from the messenger could also follow up and.
What day paper, what?
It would have only been online if it came out today.
It was in Sunday's paper.
Was it yesterday?
I think it was.
I don't know, I really don't know anything about it.
I saw a tweet and I questioned it.
It was either Saturday or Sunday, because I looked at it, and it looked like either a big typo, you know, mistake, because they didn't have the right place. So maybe they just need to follow up on it too.
I thought it was good, and I thank the resident here for bringing this forward, because I think it's very confusing. Who is supposed to attend? Who's the audience? Who is this for? Those kind of things. So it'd be good to get some clarification since it's, and it's at our community center.
Because I didn't reach out to, do you know who wrote it?
No.
It was, I think it was a press release. It looked like one of those press releases. And I, I, you know, whether OU is a, a sponsor, it just made it look like it was going to be at OU till you got to the last sentence, and then it said, "Community Center." So it was just really confusing. So, so the messenger, Sarah, wherever you are, just needs to follow up and maybe print a little bit more to kind of clarify.
And Stephen, did you want to mention cigarettes? The cigarette grant?
No.
You didn't want to mention?
What I am gonna do though is move on to the other item that I had, that I wanted to talk about. Which is that we received the Athens Community Television, ACTV's 2014 report. And I just want to highlight a couple of the achievements or things that they had accomplished, accomplishments for Matt Green listed in this. One is that ACTV continues to work with Ohio University Community Work Study Program in 2014 to where they had two 10-hour positions available for students to intern. Also working with Hawking College, and in particular with their broadcast production and engineering students, to where they had five students, five interns that received credit while at ACTV. Another big thing, this is coming up, this is this month, is the Athens Kids Indie Digital Film Workshop, AKIDS, which is being taught at ACTV, where there, it looks like there's going to be 12 middle-aged or middle school children who are involved in that project. Learning how to videotape. And the last update is, is they've had a number of website updates to include switching over from, from Bit TV to YouTube for its video on-demand services. So doing a lot. Member Fall?
This is related to the television. People have been asking, where our council television channel is? And have we put that on the website?
It's on Channel 5.
I don't know. I did, I did receive notification from Scott on where it is.
Okay. It's just people have asked me, it's always surprising, people ask me about the television. And we just, I think that just maybe a, a notice on the website would be good. Because people are out there wandering around the various channels looking for us.
He's got it.
Okay, thank you.
No, Member Pappy, I will get back to the grant issue as a grant.
And let me mention one other thing with ACTV, that Matt Green did notify us that council member serves on the board for ACTV, and we have an opening there now, so I'm putting the news out to council members tonight if you'd like to serve.
I thought it was the council president's or?
Apparently it's a council member, is what it says. And it's a four-year term. They meet four times a year.
That's an interesting minute.
Okay, thank you.
Member Pappy had mentioned this, that there was a Keep America Beautiful cigarette litter campaign grant that was put forward where the fiscal agent is going to be the Athens Hawking Recycling Center, but it's also teaming up with, with Gary Chancey at the Wayne National Forest, having done as a KAV affiliate, as well as the village of Haydenville. Haydenville's trying to change the face on the city, or their village, rather. And so they were written into the grant as well to go after some more cigarette butt recycling bins that'll go up in various areas. As I've mentioned before, that we did get the grant from the Athens Foundation for 40 cigarette butt bins to be located up and down Court Street. But this second granting mechanism would afford for cigarette butts to be placed up Washington Union and around OU campus. OU is another affiliate with this grant. So keeping our fingers crossed. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Member Patterson. We'll move on to Finance and Personnel Committee. Councilmember Reisner is chair.
Thank you, Madam President. First item I'm looking at here is, our parking garage needs repairs, and we've had meetings with the auditors and bonding company representatives, trying to find financing. It appears that we have a pretty solid figure about how much money we need. The anticipated cost of the project is about Of course, the problem is, how do we raise the revenue? What, what company do we go with? We've been listening to some proposals, there's ideas of, of bonds and other monetary instruments to, that the city could go with. I don't think the administration's made a decision yet on which way to go with that.
As far as I know, we're still looking at some of the estimates, and the conversation that occurred at that meeting was whether to roll it up with the pool levy dollars, since we'd be putting out two bonds in one year if we intended to run with both of them this, this year construction season.
Right.
I think, I forget who was all there, but that, if I'm wrong about that, that's what's basic.
The most councils are.
No, I have to agree. We have a pretty set idea. We have an estimate. We have an stamped engineer's estimate for the reverse of the parking garage. The pool, the exterior pool was a number that was floated from the advisory board, and we did receive notification today from our director, Rich Campatelli, who spoke with the consultant firm that felt that 3.5 was the very low end. So here we are again, trying to determine. And it's, it's kind of, you know, are we in a position where one project is pushing another in terms of, because of the financing, so. I guess there's a follow-up meeting. I'm not invited to it, but, but the auditor has, going to have with some members regarding financing, so.
Well, I, I think with the, there's more of a timeline crunch with the parking garage. And so I would hate for the parking garage to be folded into another year where the, all the work that we've done with the engineering company that gave us the presentation and everything would be delayed waiting for the pool. And, and the company that, the design and engineering for the garage is on, is, is fairly progressed, right? I mean, they've given us fairly consistent recommendations for the amount of money. And it's the company that we're, the processor, the people that we're looking at is to, for the funding mechanism, who we go and how we go with the bond. It's not necessarily who we're going with to do the engineering for the garage. That's.
Well, I think, let's, let's bring the conversation back here. We have two things going on. We have a parking garage that we have a very solid figure in designs, and we know how much we need. The problem is, we don't exactly have a funding mechanism in place to be able to pay off the bond, whether it's 10, 15, or 20 a year. The pool, on the other hand, we do have a funding mechanism. We passed a levy. That is going to raise approximately, what, 16, 17 million dollars over?
20 years.
I thought it was 14, so I may be wrong on that, but you never know.
Right. But anyway, the thing is, but we don't have any plans. We, we have, we have concepts, we have ideas, but we don't have an amount. So what I'm afraid of, and I think this is sort of what Councilman Fall was talking, Councilwoman Fall was talking about, is that if we're having two projects, is one going to drive the other one out? How do we go about doing this? Is it really worthwhile then to lump them both together, or should we proceed separately? And I think that's something that the administration is going to have to decide, which, which way should we go? I mean, it's not for council here to make that decision.
Well, I would contend that it's a financial issue, that, that it's my understanding from what I know that the auditor's office is the one who goes out and secures the bonds. When they came to us, they indicated that it would be most cost-effective to put them together. And you're right, when you talk about the pool, the outdoor pool, we may, like we say, it may last this year, it may not last into next year, which was kind of the driver to have that bond in place for that. But I hear what you're saying, and we feel like we're facing the same issue. The mayor also, I don't know if you gave this to them or not.
I think I did.
Was where the past ordinance is.
Right, I was gonna bring that up, since we're talking about.
Parking garage.
Parking garage funding. Somehow the parking garage is going to have to pay for itself. We're not going to have another levy to pay the garage. I don't see that coming. But what we could do is raise revenue to the garage. Now, the item that you just handed me before the session here talks about an ordinance that actually decreased.
Yes.
Yeah, that was just an FYI, that it was decreased back in 2007, so.
I think we're.
When was that decreased?
Let's see, that was.
June 4th, 2007, 05207.
Yes. 2007.
Does it give a rationale about why it was decreased?
Let's just read here. It said, B, the city parking garage rates and regulations are established as follows. Strike through 65 cents per hour and it changed to 25 cents per half hour. So it was a decrease.
Or 10.
No.
15 cents.
No, that's, no, no, 65 cents per hour versus.
Per half hour, so 50 cents total for.
So we lost, we lost some money there.
15 cents.
I think the thrust of that at, at the time was that we, originally, there are some, I believe, auditor hack requested this information from the collective council, right? Essentially, there's to look over the transitions and what occurred with the parking garage. One of the things that occurred, of course, is in 2001, we went from, we basically bought meters and started putting meters in rather than having an attendant at the bottom, covering, you know, taking the change. So that was one alteration. So 05201 was the first one to buy the meters. Let's see, 07401, if I understand, was amending some of the costs, and at that point, they were talking, putting the rates in at 65 cents per hour, 25 cents for 22 minutes, okay? With the idea the meters would only accept quarters. I guess that's why they were doing an increase of 22 minutes. Card system to charge at 60 cents per hour with refunds on the half-hour increments. Then, of course, they still had, kept the 85 per month for reserve and et cetera, et cetera. And again, they changed it 24 hours because originally it was not 24 hours. You had a meter, a, some, an attendant there who was only there doing business hours. I think they stopped at seven. I forget exactly what time they stopped. 05207 was probably a reduction with the idea that it was costing us less to maintain and run it, and that the 65 cents was kind of an odd. If you look at the, the notation on it, I think it says, well, no, I guess it just doesn't say the reason why, but I have to assume it's because they just wanted to reduce the rates, make it easy. to make it easy.
Was that $85 a month or per year?
Per, per reserved space.
Per month, I'm sorry.
Yes. And again, what I'm, what I'm looking at is, again, okay, so we had 1.65 cents an hour. We need, we're going to need a cash flow. If you, you attended the bond council, you were saying at a 10-year, 1.85 million dollars, a 10-year is going to cost us $223,000 a month, a year rather, sorry. Our revenues that we're making right now is not that much higher than, our estimated revenue for the year is 288. What are you laughing about?
Now, that is our revenue.
That is our revenue.
Now minus, what's our expenses for the same period estimate?
Well, that's a good question. Okay, if I'm looking at the December financials, which you get and vote on every month, the December's revised appropriation for 2014, December was 384, okay, $384,000, of which your today expense shows 182,000 with 201, or almost 202,000 unexpended, okay? The reason why it's higher at that point is because we had appropriated money approximately 140,000 into the TC 500s with the idea we're going to work on the elevators that last year. We did not do that. So you can see that we went, we dipped, if the certified resource is 288 and we appropriated 388, we're obviously digging a hole, we did not spend all that. So the expenses, we have to guesstimate is going to run about, is going to run at least 180 to 200,000 per year. So the idea is, how do we, how do we make that to 233 even if we raise the rates?
I do, I have obtained a useful life statement from the engineer, I don't know that I've afforded that, I apologize.
Yes, you did.
But it should, I did a 15-years, meaning because of the level of the improvements. Now, that doesn't mean we may not have, we will have to spend other money during that 15 years in terms of operation for, you know, inspections and whatever improvements are needed, but that's at least bringing it...
Well, at the checklist too, remember, this, this became an issue after looking at the engineering design that the checklist of improvements or maintenance was not done on the schedule that they had suggested at the time 15 years ago when the last group was in here. So, and when you say 15 years, is that from the time of completion of the work?
Yes, based on the language that the engineer is sending us after...
Okay, to kind of short story long here.
It is...
We know how much we're raising, we know how much our expenses are, we know how much is left over, how much more do we need in the kitty in order to afford the payback?
The mayor attempted to do a projection, so.
But I think it was just too vague from what I've heard from the auditor's office. So I guess the question would be is how to sharpen it up and get some better numbers. If I was doing the guesstimate on this and I ran it, I don't have it in front of me really, I was expecting to close to 409 if we went up to 20, 75 cents an hour. That's including that we'd be adding the meters and the reserved parking monthly and the non-reserved parking monthly. Other revenues, of course, would be to take a hard look at when we do give freebies, which we do. I know the conversation was what about Sunday? Sunday, we do not charge, but the fact is we do not have somebody enforcing it either. So we'd have to hire additional personnel, you know, go through the whole process of actually additional staff, which would be a cost. So we're close, we're not there entirely. If I look at the, the maintenance might go down in the short term because we'd be making it nice and new, the elevators, of course, we do not know that thing entirely because that's going to last longer than the structure itself.
Well, any increase in parking fees that we would implement, and I think we're going to have to, I don't think there's any question, that will serve as a basis. We will be able to see what the revenues are being generated and if we need to make an adjustment up or find some other source within the parking garage, like you say, maybe we'd have to eliminate the freebies, then we can implement that.
There's other things too that I think warrant exploration, we've talked about this before, looking at the renewal of the cell tower lease, you know, and working that because, quite honestly, part of the problem with parking garage is when they board holes to run their conduit through, it compromises the integrity of some of the walls and the concrete flooring. So I think that really should be looked at as well. I agree with you, Mayor, I was crunching the numbers as we're sitting here and thinking this is very imperfect, but I was looking at like 434,000, but again, that's assuming that you're increasing those leased spaces to buy a third more.
Well, that's what we'd have to do and again, I think I've heard complaints from all of you that we're at capacity right now. If this is a case of supply and demand, like the old capital system, when the demand goes up, price goes up too and we have to accept that.
I think, Cyrus, we have to take into account the freebies because it seems that around Christmas, we almost have a whole chunk of time and so we're not really even charging for the whole 12 months, we're charging 11 months. And then everybody seems to come forward and say, we're having a festival or we're having a fest or whatever and they want us to give the parking garage free. And so I think people need to also realize that we have to have upkeep and maintenance and a capital improvement and so we have to seriously look at it, you know, maybe that only two, maybe two of the top floors are free during certain times or something, I mean.
We do, we'd like to include, to go to the same smart card parking app that Ohio University is using, it's my understanding, we just need to put a little bit of money into, a little bit of capital outlay, I mean, small amount and then we'll be able to get that up and running.
Into the new meters, you mean?
No, actually it's a...
You can use existing, but you swipe the card and sound like, "A," whatever, just like it does now.
So basically what you're suggesting is...
Raising the rates right now.
20, what are you suggesting, like 30 cents every 20 minutes? No, you want 25 cents every 20 minutes.
We've got 50 cents an hour right now.
Right.
Go to 75.
So...
That'd be a start, see where we go. See if we have a drop in capacity or rather occupancy and then also where the revenue is.
And that's what OU charges.
Equivalent to OU, because that's what you're seeing.
And they charge for all their employees to park and all the students.
I don't know that there's any free parking anymore.
Yeah, and they don't even, I mean, one thing people complained about was that they're not even letting some of the people who are working on campus park on...
The parking, our parking garage.
Yeah, all those big trucks, you know, which is fine, they're paying, but that impacts the capacity issue too.
Okay, just to draw all this in, how do we proceed?
You have examples ordinances right there. Take the ordinance where you decreased it, turn it into increase and change the number.
So the first way, thing you want to do is increase the fees in the parking garage, then the second thing is to move on to the actual bond itself?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's where I, I wasn't privy to any of these conversations, I'm not on finance and I wasn't at the bond hearing. I know, but I'm, my, my concern is putting the two issues together. I don't know, I, I saw some of the information that was, was put forward, but I have a lot of concern with putting those two. I don't think we are where we need to be in determining where we're moving with the recreational aspects of the levy.
Okay, I thought we were just talking about garage right now.
Right now, yeah.
Well, he had started with the bond, pulling the bonds together and, and bringing both forward.
No.
No?
I thought, I was hearing that wasn't the case, that's just I was getting...
I don't think we're ready, I don't think we're ready for that.
I would agree with that.
No, we're not.
I...
I mean, it may save us money somewhat from what the bond person was saying at the meeting was that...
How much money?
Well, the cost, the cost benefit, I think that...
Initiation of the bonds, in other words, rather than initiation of two bonds, which is usually a couple points of percentage, this would be initiation of one bond.
But you may have two bonds back to back, you know, two months apart or something like that, but at least they'll be assigned.
There could be six months or nine months between the two.
I think we need to go ahead with the parking garage, it has a much firmer timeline and it needs to be done.
It has revenue to show the bond council that we're generating revenue.
Well, that's what we're working towards, but I would say to not lose sight of the pool, that we have to have some figure and some dollar amount to work with if we are going to attempt to build it and then, you know, end in August and then have the outdoor pool completed by June of 2016.
But that's much more amorphous at this point, I think, the, the planning process for it hasn't been completed.
It has not.
And we are still waiting for consultants to come back with some of the information and I'm concerned that the parking garage is much more of a time crunch because if we don't get it started, we're going to have to redo the, the engineering because it's going to have to sit around for another year. It's going to cost us more, so in the long run.
That's the end there.
From listening to all, I think, the meeting I sat in, and I can be corrected if I'm wrong on it, but what I understood the consultant to be saying about the bonds, if you combine the two projects, you have more companies that would come in to bid and get better rates compared to if you split the projects and you only have one, it's only like 1.8 million if it's a parking garage, you may only have one and the rates may be higher. And so I think that's, that's kind of the essence of what I took from the meeting.
Me too.
They did say that would make it more competitive for larger banks.
But we may not be in a position where we can really take advantage of that.
Yeah.
Again, it's a matter of the funding and the fact that we don't really have a good figure for the pool. Rich Campinelli this afternoon sent out an email, I think we all read it, he was, I mean, I was reading a little bit too much in the email, but he seemed rather surprised that we're going with such a low figure for three and a half million. He was saying that was like the very minimum absolute rock bottom figure that you could possibly do a swimming pool for, outdoor pool, and which gave me the impression that he was looking at something a little more upscale.
Well, that didn't even bring into fact that there were many people there at that public hearing discussing an indoor pool facility.
That is indeed part of it, that the notation was that if they took, took a totality of approximately 7.5 from the levy, they would divide it between the indoor and the outdoor. Whereas indoors should, maybe more costly, even if it's a therapeutic pool in the outdoor. But I get what you're saying, so in order to move forward, we need to determine the financing for the parking garage if we're going to do it this year.
I'm sure.
The other notes that I have from that meeting stated that if we did, went with a 15-year limit, we'd have two to three banks that would be interested, but as a 20-year limit, we'd have one bank, so that there's another factor there between, for how many banks might respond.
Well, if we're going to go with a designed 15-year, we can't go 20.
Right.
Not here.
No.
And again, with, the expectation is in 10 years you're going to have to put some more money in, the question is how much and how much maintenance it takes. And then the other one would do, build in a capital, you know, piggy bank so to speak, rainy day fund in that. I tell you the truth, I was never aware, for some reason, I probably sat in the audience while they reduced the rates, probably didn't think about the implications on that, but I've been the mayor now, I recognize that almost everything you have to build in is a component of replacement, you know, the replacement cost. And not that we want to replace parking garage, but maintenance at least. You know, I have no problem, you know, I, I think putting together may make it confusing. I'd rather get the, you know, the parking garage done. I am concerned about the, it's really squeaky how close we could come to paying that debt off on the 10-year. We could try for the 15, but if we actually get ahead of it, we could always bank that money somehow. Remember, the parking garage is proprietary, so we can't take money out of that and put it elsewhere. There's nothing to say we can't pull money from other sources and put it in. And I say that loosely because I realize we also have a, you know, a meter fund on the streets.
Yeah.
Which basically goes to, is pretty much goes to the general fund. That doesn't mean we can't cap that off. If we increase the rates citywide, that would give us an extra bump as well. And I'm saying, I'm freelancing that right now, so I don't really want you guys to take and run with it.
I was thinking that.
We have to start thinking about how to, how to fund this so it doesn't fall, a piece of concrete doesn't fall on somebody's head.
Is that also included in the pocket, you was raising the reserve parking too?
I think everything would be, yeah, I, when I did the numbers, I basically did the reserve, monthly reserve and non-reserve. There are about three components I added to it. I did not adjust the interest or the, or even play with the cell towers. The cell towers, if I remember, one's got a 3% increase every year, the other one has I think a two or four, I forget which way it is. There's two, they're not, they're not congruent. We could always open up renegotiations on that. I don't know what it would take, but we could try because I think there is a, there is a reopening clause in there in the contract. And again, when we did that number, we did it basically by how much parking space of the footprint of the place, but they have impacted us more.
Mayor, how much does it cost us to park on our city streets?
Same as the outside, I think they're both the same, 25 cents for 30 minutes.
It is.
So if we raise them all, that would be a bump as well. And again, that would end up in the general fund, that doesn't mean you can't transfer it out of the general fund into the parking garage, vice versa.
But I think we all agree that the parking garage should try to pay for itself as much as it possibly can, rather than try to say, well, we'll just go from the outside and bring another, because the general fund money is general fund money and it's used for other things.
You know, I was just going to say, another, another argument for splitting these up and having two separate bonds, one for the pool and one for the parking garage is the fact that these, you know, lifespan of any building also comes into play when you're looking at these bonds and so they're looking at how long is the parking garage going to last even out with these repairs and it could be significantly different from how long the pool would last when you're looking at, you know, who's going to come to the table, whether it's 10, 15, or 20 years.
So Monday we'll come forward with an ordinance to raise the rates in the parking garage?
Raise parking rates in general or?
Well, we were talking about the garage.
I would start with the garage and then take a hard look at what's on the street. If I look during the day, I see a lot of the street, Court Street is empty, not a lot of it, but enough of it. The parking is, it really crowds out when we, when the parking meters aren't functioning in the after six, so to speak.
How long would it take to recalibrate the?
I don't know, that's a question we'll have to ask our guys there, maintenance people. And again, I'm not advocating the idea of raising rates on the street, but, you know, the idea is to look and say, okay, when was the last time we did this? We actually did a reduction, what, seven years ago? So obviously, you know, it's been a bargain for quite some time. On the parking garage level and I suspect we haven't really changed the, the street that much either.
Well, there had been some talk about changing the meters on the street to, one meter would serve multiple parking spots, so.
Not in there yet.
It would seem that if we were going to raise rates there, that we might be looking into changing the meters also.
Well, I don't know if the mechanics really would justify that, does it cost to do all those changes? Some of the things you could see, you know, I, I look at a lot of the parking, if we swap out the meters, there'd probably be a push to say, let's go with a credit card meter, let's go with a meter that zeros out when the car leaves, okay? I mean, intelligent communities actually all have ones that would actually tell you if the meter's empty, that parking space is empty, so you could get on your phone and say, there's one down the block and it can go there. There's other ones in San Francisco, I believe there's a district in San Francisco that's actually running a flexible scale with the idea they're aiming at 15% vacancy on any given street, so if there's less than 15%, the price goes up per hour, if there's more, it goes down.
Okay.
I'm not ready to go.
It's revenue, right? They're looking at the revenue.
Yeah, all right.
I would suggest, might, I was just saying, might I suggest that we look at the parking garage rates and lease rates as well as the cell tower? That might even be a separate piece as well, but look at that first moving forward because I think with the city, the street parking meters and that, I think there's a lot that needs to be looked at in more detail as well, i.e. the permitting, the permits that go along with loading zones. I think there's a lot that needs to be reevaluated.
And I think if we put the software system on top of that, that OU has, and we've been having discussions on that, I believe, I'm not a high-techy person when it comes down to that type of stuff, but at the same time, I know the discussion with the chief and OU have occurred because there's no real capital, big capital costs, it's not like we have to swap out all the meters, it's a software and application on top of it.
And just a question about timing, are we also needing, given the tight time schedule for the parking garage repairs, are we trying to move forward with an ordinance to authorize the borrowing of the money?
And what is that language? Because if that's coming from a bond council, you'll have to work with them for that language.
And again, we should, we should have a designated, you know, you know, service along with that. Part of it would be the increase of the meters, but we probably need to sharpen that up because right now, the way I'm looking at it is we barely make that dollar amount. 15 years we will. I hesitate to go out 15 years, but we have to look at that critically and say, okay, can we make that dollar amount without having to rate, as you say, the general fund or pull money from other sources? So, you know, but I think we, if we want to do it this year, we have to start moving on it, doing the debt count, the bond council and raising the meter.
Thursday, we do have a meeting, I believe, with the auditor and the bond council.
Okay, and I believe there was another agency that was offering revenue projection assistance, so that'll help.
One step at a time. Any other comments on that? Next item I had here was non-union pay structure, I think you wanted to mention something about that.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I'm still coming forward requesting that council... I'm still coming forward requesting that council consider the additional 1% for non-union employees to reach a more, greater level of parity as we move forward with job analysis. And I would also request that that be retroactive to the 1st of January of this year, where all of non-union receive 2%. I have read some other documents that have been copied on regarding savings. I contend that all of our, each department could outline to you where they've had cost savings over the past year or years, as it were, due to either unfulfilled positions, people being out on injury leave. I was reading the draft of the police chief's annual report, and the first statement is lower levels of staffing due to early retirees and having officers out based on injury. One was injured in the West Union Street fire. So, again, I just am continuing to ask on behalf of the hard-working employees as a whole in the city of Athens, you know, union has fixed rates and they negotiate those, they bargain. I'm here for the voice of the non-union employees.
Let me add something to that. According to the ruling of the previous law director, I don't have to talk to you guys about it.
That's correct.
I can just do it. Now, the question is, is the money in the various departments? Well, it is right now, maybe just to August, maybe up to September.
Right.
And then, we'd have to appropriate more. But the fact is, I'm talking to you because I think communication transparency is important. And I do believe that you have, you should have the authority for this. And if you don't, we'll put that through and see what happens.
Comments?
I have a question. So, would we even be having this conversation if the other issue had not happened, that you wanted to increase the, we were increasing at 2%, correct?
Correct.
Would we even be having this conversation today, if you hadn't happened in December?
We would not be having this conversation.
I mean, I in no way do not think our city employees don't work hard and are good people. It just, again, as I said a few weeks ago, it just feels reactionary and you're saying, as you look at the budget throughout the rest of the year, that there's going to come a time where there's going to be an issue.
Well, I don't know that for sure. I haven't really gotten the actual salary levels nailed down. I've requested those at one point. At the same time, it comes down to how much, you know, overtime, interns, I mean TC 100s are pretty much fungible within that scope. We've added, what, 2,000 per staff person for the insurance, medical insurance? So, we have had growth within the TC 100s. I haven't sat down and sharpened my pencil, said which non-unions, in what slots would actually be affected adversely. I think, you know, I talked to the police chief, of course, he's saying that his TC 100s seem to be low because we shorted him, because last year he did have understaffing, and therefore, he did not use all his money. I think I'm getting some word from Rich Campanelli as well. I've yet to check those numbers, just I haven't had time, I've been dealing with other issues. Previously, I rely on other sources. So, you know, conversation-wise, I am concerned about it, but at the same time, there's the morale of our staff and our workers.
And that was the clarification I was going to ask as well, having missed a couple committee meetings when I was not present for, but can you please remind me the amount that it would be for the, was it 1% raise, is that correct?
We had estimated, the numbers coming out of the auditor's office is about 47,000 per 1%. So, when we went 2% for non-union, we were adding about 90 and change, 94 and change or something. Add another one, another 47 to that, you can do the calculation. Does that answer your question? And again, these are numbers submitted by the deputy auditor in November when we put the budget together.
When we're talking about 1% for non-union, is that across the board, even including?
That's how we've done it, and I understand that now, it's not necessarily.
But that's, I mean, in theory, it's still not parity. I mean, we still will have, because of past instances where, you know, various departments have done their own pay raises, and so, if it's an issue, I'm, you know, I think it's really important to have people speaking for the non-union, because they are non-union, and we need to be a voice for them. My concern is that it's not, I don't want to be like what Michelle was getting to, not necessarily forced into it, but we have to look at, there's a multitude of issues here. There's just the pay raise, but also all the equivalent, the various things that go with it, with, you know, the retirement that we have to pay and the workers' compensation that we have to pay, that's all based on their pay. And there's, it's all mixed up with what went on in December, the retroactivity of what went on in December. I mean, it's not going to be parity, because the people are only going to get 1% to January, where other people got it for much longer.
Yes, do we request back to May? No.
No.
You know, say those books are closed, and I understand that, but you can see what has occurred.
Yeah.
And it seems to be a tumbling effect. Frankly, we learned about this in almost mid, just past mid, almost to late December. Now, we're in February, and, you know, that's why I do continue to continue to bring that up. And when you talk about the job analysis questionnaires and the response getting back, you know, it's been promised that this job evaluation will be done, well, we do intend to make sure that this happens, but we do have other positions out there, and these staffers are underpaid based on the load of work that they do as well, so.
Well, based upon what the previous law director wrote in his opinion, it's pretty clear in saying that each of the different departments have, or at least there's nothing to prevent them from giving pay raises and being retroactive. So, when the administration says that you don't need the permission of council, you're absolutely right, you don't. I go along with the opinion of the law director. I'm not going to second-guess it, I'm not a judge. And the only other way I could think of to second-guess it would be to sue ourselves and take it to state court, see who's right or wrong. I don't want to do that. What I do see is that what happened in the auditor's office is done, okay? I don't think there's any way that council is going to go and try to take the retroactive payback from May from the employees or reduce through legislation the rate of the raise. The only thing council can do now is that we can look at possible ordinances that would prevent such a thing happening again from a department. We can take back the power of retroactive raises. We can take that back and say, if you want to give your employees a retroactive raise to any time, you have to come to council first for permission. You have to ask us, and then, if we so feel, we may grant you it or we may not. We're a legislative body, we can flip that way.
The retroactivity in terms of what occurred, that's within the year's budget. In other words, a carryover towards the end of the year, the budget, the money's there, and therefore, it can be retroactively given. The example of right now, I could not, without act of council, retroactively give all the non-union everything down to last June, because really, that becomes a prior year bill, which as you know from last ordinance, last week, you passed an ordinance for doing that. So, that takes an act of council. If you're trying to adjust and address the retroactivity within the year's budget, you probably need to look at some unique wording on that. I don't think I've ever thought of it as a possibility, so therefore, this is new territory for me. In terms of parity, as I say, I can submit one tomorrow. I fully expect it to be stopped at the auditor's office with questions of whether the money's there or not. That would take an act of council to appropriate that money. I'm just pointing out the scenarios of it. We're trying to do the conversation, we're trying to do job analysis, realize our human resource department is one and a half, one and three-quarters person. We've had a rush to the door because of opers last December. We have a rush to get jobs filled as a result as well. So, there are a lot of on our plates of our human resource department, so. I wish I could say we're going to get it all done tomorrow, but we have to, you know, there's procedures that have to be followed with any civil service system. If you feel you can't go back and reset the clock, then at the very least, I would say, start looking at the 1%. And it is reactive, but if I had my druthers, I'd say you revoke the retroactivity and you revoke the percentage increase, but that's just my call, it's up to you. I have no say in that, supposedly. Either that or take closer scrutiny of what the TC 100s are doing.
Mayor Butler.
Hey, Mayor. Talk about pay raise, huh? I'm okay with that. So, for the sake of discussion, and I too don't believe there's a need to be reactionary or to make decisions in a knee-jerk fashion, but I also understand that life is not fair and that sometimes things happen that are frustrating and annoying, and specifically with the non-union personnel that did not receive the pay raise. So, for the sake of discussion or compromise, is there, is it worthwhile for us to look at a pay raise that would not be retroactive for non-union personnel, but to look at one that would begin within the next few months or down the road a little bit? That's, it may not be fair, but it would also be acknowledging.
It's already acknowledged, you've already wiped out seven years, seven months, eight months now, so you want us to continue? That, I'm sorry. I'm out of control.
But you mean comparing with what went on in this other department?
In the auditor's department? You're comparing what went on in the auditor's department? When you say?
We need seven months.
What are you talking about?
Well, what I heard Member Butler asking is whether or not there was some thought about, let's look at something in the coming months. So, yes, I was retroactive to the seven months, eight months now, where others had received a change. And I understand that there are other maybe rules, or I really don't have the knowledge or legislation that speaks to other elected officials in their offices, so. In terms of where they have their power, in terms of pay increases and setting rates for their clerks or whatever it may be.
But the, from what the mayor just said, was that the stuff that happened in May is now all prior year, and that's, is that because the books closed out in December?
Essentially, the books are closed. So, we had to pay, what, 16.5 for a previous year's bill last week.
So, that's water under the bridge, and we're now looking at?
But it, it's this year's money.
It's, yeah. I mean, the thing is, is that you, it's forever. I mean, there's, I can understand the difference between giving bonuses to people who worked really hard during the year and had added, you know, that's like a separate, sometimes I look at what the auditor did, and it was almost like a bonus system that went in, but that wasn't a bonus, it was just a pay increase, as opposed to a one-time bonus. And our ability to pay non-union a living wage with what they are, commensurate with their experience and their workloads, which I understand is an issue, and so, I think that we need to kind of look at those. The auditor's office is, that's under, that's so water, so much water under the bridge. So, what you're asking for is not retroactivity to May, you're asking for it to January. Is that right?
Yes.
For all non-union, including the people who've already gotten their retro, so it's only for some non-union. Is that also?
Oh, it's for, is that what we're talking about?
Which departments? I'm not, that's the other thing, is does it include?
Every single non-union person outside of the auditor's office would get this?
That are under the purview of the mayor's office in terms of departments, as an elected official.
So, what about those other non-union people out there? Are there any?
The court.
Judge sets their salaries.
Law directors.
So, this would just be for the mayor's office?
When you say the mayor's office, I'm talking about.
EPW.
Right, under the purview of the mayor.
Yes.
Okay. So.
Well, not to exclude, we would not be excluding your staff, meaning the clerk and the TGC and the IT and just all the different components, so.
And if I understand what you're doing is that you're saying there is a distinction, the retroactive pay from the auditor's office wasn't the last fiscal year, and what you're doing, what you're suggesting now, is within this budgetary year.
Yes, okay.
And they're saying that they do have funds identified, at least for a portion of the year, correct?
Well, within all the?
A good portion of the year.
Within the realm of the employees that you have, do you have any positions that are unfilled that have been appropriated for?
I think the mayor, our office.
Yeah, one executive secretary.
Can you then do as the auditor did and take those funds and use those as, for the pay raise?
Yeah, probably. But that's not, that also translates to all departments, though.
We have workers that are paid from three different funds.
Yeah. Actually, four.
I was just going to say four, waters, there were a trash storm, yes.
My, I'm in a quandary. I feel the.
Quagmire.
Quagmire. That the workers are being kind of buffeted with this whole thing, and that's unfortunate. That's, that morale is low, because people feel that there's not, that it hasn't been fair, and it hasn't. And it's been unfortunate, the way that this has unfolded, and I want to support our workers, because they go out and they do, they function, they make the city function, and morale is really important. And so, and it's unfortunate that this whole, you know, that they're in the middle of it.
It seems to me that in our future legislation, we also need to look at parity between all these departments that are run by different elected officials, whether we can do that or not through ORC. I don't know. You know, if I, if I thought that the current judge, you know, and I was in a position of a clerk position, I would certainly try to, and they, that person was always giving raises according to their budget, well, I'd want to transfer over that department. I mean, I, it seems to me that when you work for city government, you work for city government, and there needs to be some kind of parity, because this could again come down in the future with whoever the elected official is who decides to do this.
Does this go to the pay bands, pay scales, what are they called?
I mean, obviously, the intent, or what we thought with the intent of that is not working, so that is something else.
Right.
Again, my concept of the pay ranges was what you hire somebody with. The STEP program, which of course is something different, I thought that had to do with seniority. I thought we were doing away with that over time. If, you know, explanations aside, the only two pieces of legislation I'm aware of that give you the authority is, again, Athens City Code 30602, appointed officials and employees. Says, "Various positions of appointment in the city shall be created and established by council. Salary to be paid and bond required of each appointed official and employee shall be established by council." Or Ohio Vice Code 73108, power legislative authority to salaries and bonds. That's the only things I have to work with. Explanations of how well people worked, that they saved money, that they did a good job, yes, I can tell you about that too. You know about that. You've seen them on your street corner fixing things. You see them directing traffic, you see them crunching the parties when they get out of hand, which all save money. They're doing the job.
Right.
Okay. If you want to take the authority back, that's your course. From what I understand, the court's the only one that's outside the purview. But again, this is, you know, I would take, I don't have time to study all the pieces of legislation out there. You stick some of this stuff in an RRC, you're going to get a wealth of information and legalese that was beyond me most of the time. But the fact is that we have, we have a morale problem. I never thought about retroactivity. I would suggest that if you want to, since I can't establish my own salary, you can't establish your own salary for this term of office, why don't you go back to my first home and give, term and give me a raise? All it takes is an act of council for you guys to do a previous year bill, to give me a 5% raise for my first four years, because it's never been addressed in RRC, has it? And nobody's ever thought about it before, or maybe they have, but it sounds so absurd, I wouldn't even suggest it, except as a modest proposal.
You know, I'm listening to this, and I keep thinking that one of the things that certainly needs to be looked at, looked at by finance and personnel, is to look into what can be done with, with what could become carryover, what do we do with the? What, what do we do with a position that doesn't get filled, isn't filled, and then, you know, being able to use that money to, as a retro to payback or raise to individuals? Because in my mind, as I'm thinking this through, it just seems like that could potentially almost promote leaving this vacancy and keeping it vacant. Because now I have this pot of money that I can just sit there and continually give raises, so I think that there should be language that we look at, that's specific to a vacant, some vacancy, you know, and that there is still money in the TC 100s at the end, because of that vacancy, you know, limitations on what that money can be used for.
Again, some, in the past, what I've seen with Mayor Abel, sometimes there were vacancies with the money appropriated for that particular position, sometimes there weren't. A lot of it had to do with how, most of the time, it's the general fund, everybody's trying to take control of it. You yourself, look at the general fund right now, and, you know, we're scraping along. It's a $13 million budget, with, what are we talking about? At this point, 379, which is not a lot of money in terms of, you know, excess, okay? Sometimes, even when you talk about vacancies, they will be filled during the year, so rather than have to go back to the well and say, can you appropriate more money? If there, if there's standing ones, and we've had phase in and phase out, we've had overlaps and increases staffing, you do the staffing, don't you? In theory, you're supposed to be doing the pay raises, too, the non-union. You passed an ordinance, 0121, right? Oh, 14, 2014. So that, that was 2 percent for non-union. So 2 percent doesn't mean 2 percent anymore. I'm not sure what that language goes towards. The ones that don't answer to elected officials?
Right.
Or the ones that do? How do we parse that out? Non-union elected officials, mentored, non-union, non-mented, elected officials. So again, what do you have? You have Ohio Vice Code 37108, you have Athens City Code 30602.
I have a question. Are you calling into any questions of pay raises given in the court, since that is also an elected official?
No. No. I'm aware of the fact that court could, the judge can tell me to build a whole new courthouse. He can tell me to do that tomorrow.
As he's reminded me in the past.
As the judge has...
He's retired.
This was regarding what we were just doing, it was a few years back, and it was in budgeting in terms of that. But he has control of his funds, and that's been my understanding, understanding the entire time.
But, you know, again, whatever you guys want to do, it's your, it's your call. But again, as it stands now, I can throw in the 1 percent, and you have no say in it, except for the dollars that need to be appropriated to make that, those ends meet.
Which may or may not be there.
Which may or may not be there.
Well, let's just say that you do what you say you're going to do. You give them 1 percent tomorrow, come September, the well is dry, why do you tell them then?
I go to you guys and say, I need more money, or otherwise...
And we say, no, there's no money. I mean, there's just no money. I'm just, that's a hypothetical case, the well is dry. What do we do then? Or what do you do then?
We lay off employees.
Because of 1 percent?
Shut down the city services. Is that how it works?
No. Or you just say, well, you had your 1 percent for the last six or seven months, but I can't give it to you for the rest of the year. I mean, is that what happened?
That would depend how dry the well is, wouldn't it?
I don't know.
And as I understand, there are other funds in other categories. So, there, it may be that, you know, other things, in the, within the general fund, other spending line items could then be reduced later on in the year.
But 80 percent of it is always personnel, remember that. Good 80 percent.
Is the $47,000 for 1 percent, does that include all the increased calculation for health? Health and medical, and all the things that's based on the salary?
Yes.
I mean, we're not just talking about, I mean, that's the thing, one thing that was concerning about what happened in the auditor's office, they're not just getting a 2 or 4 percent increase, it's all the associated raise in medical and everything. I mean, people need to realize...
Medical doesn't change for that, although we did raise it, what, 2,000, 2,500 per person, just a, and that's really just us setting aside that money for those issues. Purse, withholding tax, workers' comp, those are all, do coventures play. It's in the formulation.
There within that process.
So that $47,000 includes that?
Yes, the way I understand it.
Question?
Yeah, this is a comment, since now that I have information in front of me, and I'm hearing what I feel is all signs of the discussion, I would support moving forward with a 1 percent raise. I'm not in the trenches every day, the mayor and the city service safety director are, and I feel that it's hard to put a cost on morale, it's hard to put a price or a cost on the efficiency and the hard work that a person is putting into their daily grind of coming to work. And I know that none of our non-union employee, employees are getting rich. Like I said earlier, I know life isn't fair, I went five years without a pay raise, I know it happens, I get it, we move on. But in this case, we have an opportunity, part of this change, I support it. Thank you.
Well, just some things up, things that say the finance and personnel can move forward on, we can start looking at legislation to eliminate this retroactive pay problem. We, that we could do now, whether we, certainly for the non-union. Now, I understand during union negotiations, sometimes there's times when that gets thrown into the contract, because we go beyond the deadline. That I don't know anything about. But it seems that with the retroactive pay, that we can handle. We can go after the unfilled but appropriated positions. That money we can take back. That kitty we can put back in the general fund. Because that's where the source came from, back in December. If the money wasn't there, the raises wouldn't have happened, the retroactive pay wouldn't have happened, and this crisis wouldn't have occurred. So that is something the council can take care of.
My recommendation is if somebody wants to do retroactivity outside the union, and most of the union, as you say, is the deadlines, is to approach counsel and have this discussion.
Exactly.
Again, I, tell you the truth...
I'm saying, we're taking control back.
But I, but I think, but we need to also decide whether the 1 percent, like Kent has suggested, we need to make a decision about that.
Well, the mayor can make the decision right now.
Okay.
As he says, he doesn't need our permission, and...
So that's, that's what we're willing to do.
The thing, I think it's important here to look at, is the, the previous law director's opinion was that elected officials in their office have that power to do. Okay? That's a given. He has the power to do that. If he exercised that power, it's tacit admission that the law director's decision is the correct one to go by. Correct?
Yep.
Okay.
As you look at these unfilled positions, I'm sorry, I cannot sit anymore.
I, I can't either, but I'm stuck here.
You can all stand up, let's all stand up. To at least afford us an opportunity to comment, for example, right now, I have a vacant water treat, wastewater treatment plant manager. That position will be filled, there's someone in the interim acting in that order.
You're not saying abolish the position.
Associated...
We're not saying abolish the position, just saying, if it's not filled, you don't need any money there. Okay? When you fill it, come to us, and we'll find the money.
Well, a number of these are in process, so maybe if I just provide you an update of that, so that you know that these are going to be filled, they're going through interviews or testing processes at this time.
Well, we could put in a proviso that if it's not filled within the next three months after the passage of the legislation, the money comes back.
Or if it's not actively advertised.
I think having a better understanding of what positions are in limbo, what's not filled, I think a regular accounting of that to counsel would be very helpful. I don't think I've ever had that much since I've been here in this seat. So even having a regular, we get all these other reports, even having, you know, once a month, if that was in some statement, that said, you know, due to illness, due to whatever, I mean, I don't know, but at least it would give us some sense of, you know, what's going on in the different departments, to know whether or not this other issue with monies that have been appropriated that aren't being used, you know, what's happening with that.
I would find monthly quite a burden. Maybe we can look at something that we explore on a quarterly basis.
A quarterly?
Because it, you know, if we advertise, which are advertising now for firefighters, that doesn't close till the end of the month.
Right.
It'll be a month after that before their next test, another month after that, I mean...
So quarterly is reasonable, too.
And on the union's system, basically what you do is, if you have a vacancy, you have to do a lateral transfer through the union. You have to, within that particular union, then you have to do it within the workforce, and then you have to publicize it outside.
Right.
With a timetable for each one. If you, if, two of the documents, the document, again, I would look at, is the staffing ordinance, which I think is 12114, which also has the slotting as well. It tells you, if you, if you read into that, you'll probably see some of the positions that aren't filled, although they probably don't, you probably have to dig in to see it. So I would suggest it's probably easy not to do that, but the numbers and the, and the information is there, it's just not readily accessible. As for, you know, vacancies, some vacancies just hang fire for a long time, but at the same time, you know, we can supply with that, maybe, or the auditor could probably, I guess.
The only other thing, I want to just, third thing on my wish list, is it'd be nice for counsel to know when an office is plan, is even planning to give raises for the next year. And if they are, how much do they plan to give?
Again, most of that discussion occurred in November, when we were looking at the carryover, or estimates of what this year's income tax would be.
But November is...
Budget time, basically.
Yeah, that's a crisp time.
We started in September, we, you know, remember, there was a budget timeline that was put together for that.
Yeah. But wouldn't it be great, though, if a department head could come to us and say, you know, like, which could have happened in December, but didn't, I plan to give my employees raises, 3 and 4 percent. And to note that, say, in September, so that we're getting ready, it's not such a sticker shot.
I do need to say that, you know, finance and personnel, the conversation of raises, which was the 2 percent that we talked about, that we approved, that those conversations actually started in October. When we first started kicking it around, saying, okay, we have to start thinking about this, and so it's, it was, it went on for quite a while.
Right.
I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
But I think it's the retroactivity part that was the problem with a lot of this, because it wasn't a month or two, it was more than a half a year.
And we didn't hear from, specifically from different departments.
I understand that. I do feel compelled, too, to also point out that, because the union has been brought up a couple times tonight, and that, you know, when you're talking about union and retroactivity for a union, you know, it's a set contract, it's an actual date that they're going by. And if they go beyond that date, then retroactivity in that scenario is appropriate. So don't confuse those.
But don't forget, when they come to, to counsel to ask permission, the negotiators come to us and say, is this a good idea? Can we go this far for this percentage? Can we do retroactive? They ask our permission to do that.
And we okay the contract?
And we do it. Because we understand what's happening there. And it would be good for the non-union that we would know that someone was planning to do a retroactive pay or something.
So it sounds like we have an immediate topic we've talked about tonight, of the one, the additional 1 percent, but then we have some longer-term policy issues to come back to again, and to investigate.
Well, it's like I'm going to have to go through the entire Ohio Vice Code to throw some of this out.
Probably not. Again, I would probably look at the elements that of law directors laying's topic there, in terms of the pay ranges, the steps that were removed. I think the main reason why we didn't do merit and pay is because we really don't have a set process for doing that, and therefore, it's open to lots of influences. And even with set, I've, I've been through that at the university, where they have a nice checklist, but the checklist is, is not always fair either, and nor is it objective. So I would almost recommend removing those type of things, elements in there, but that's just me, because I go towards the simple. And again, this is something we have to work on. To me, more transparency and communication is more important about this, just so we know what page we're on, and what it's going to cost. So...
Well, concerning the 1 percent that you're projecting, you're requesting, I don't know if that's something that the finance and personnel committee, I mean, all three of us could then recommend to counsel. I think that should come from counsel as a whole, committee as a whole.
As it stands now, the power resides in me, as long as I have the money.
Exactly.
That would be the question, to work out the numbers and make sure each department has, can actually finance a 1 percent for each non-union person in that department. I'll jut back to you if I can figure that out.
Could you, if, you go ahead, because you do have the power, for communication, you can come and say, I'm doing this, to start that communication transparency.
I think I've been saying that for the past three weeks.
Yes. So I think what I'm getting is kind of a, a saying from the finance and personnel committee is that we're not, we don't feel the need to bring an ordinance forward on Monday to follow through with what you're recommending. Is that true, or not? I mean, I'm just putting that out as kind of a, I mean, is it...
No. Mike?
As the previous law director stated, that the elected official has the right to grant his employees a raise, and if that's what the mayor so chooses to do, it's not up to us to vote yes or no, and I guess, you know, it's up to him. If he wants to do it, that's fine.
But you still have the power, you still have the power of the purse. You could actually say, I don't want to see that 1 percent, I'm going to strike out all the excess fat in every TC 100, top to bottom.
Yeah. And I guess we can look at that as it happens, but you have the power to do that, and I don't think we have the right to tell you yes or no.
I, tell you the truth, again, I, I am uncomfortable with the whole concept, doing the fact, I do not see any piece of legislation that tells me I can do that. I only have two pieces of legislation that both tell me, nay. I have one opinion that says it's okay. Okay? Let's see, if I was a scientist, I'd probably go for at least a couple more tests, increase that end number, but there's only so many laws out there that apply to this thing.
I agree with Councilman Rogers, that the law director gave it, and if he gave that opinion, I'm going to hang my hat on that, because he's the one that's got to defend it.
Okay. Enough time spent on that?
I have no miscellaneous.
The only one I have is that I probably, we're up for another contract for the public